Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the Paulsboro City Council meeting for July 16th, 2025. Paulsboro is committed to being a welcoming, diverse, and equitable community, where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. And Ms. Crowe, would you say the land acknowledgement, please?
My pleasure. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Kwame people, for whom this place was known as Tak Tuk Lats, or the land of the vine maples. And here's a quote from Chief Seattle. "Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hollowed by some sad or happy event and days long vanished."
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few changes on the agenda this evening. In your teal folder, if you'll look, there is an addition. It's called the 2025 pavement preservation project change order. This is a change order that Mike Lund wants to discuss with you. It will be item F on the business agenda. And I also want to call your attention to a couple of public comments that have been sent to the council for your reading. And then, an updated parking consulting contract from Laz, correct? That Heather will be discussing with you this evening. And with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. McVeigh?
McVeigh, aye.
Bill A., aye.
Sturtes.
Crowe, aye.
Taber, aye.
Thank you, council. Now we're going on to public comment. If you have comment for the council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
My name's Diana Allen, and I'm a longtime resident of Agloon. Several weeks ago, I attended a gathering of concerned Paulsboro residents. During this meeting, there was discussion about the recent police shooting in our community that resulted in the loss of a life. The incident prompted many to reflect deeply on issues of safety, policing, and community trust. Some in the group reported having viewed the police body camera footage of the incident, while others, like myself, had not yet seen it. I come to this conversation with a deep respect for the difficult and critical work of law enforcement. Both of my younger brothers served in the Washington State Patrol for 25 years each. Through them, I have heard firsthand the complex and high-stakes decisions officers must make, often under intense pressure. In their combined 50 years of service, neither found themselves in a position that required the use of deadly force. I share this not to draw direct comparisons, but to underscore that sound training and de-escalation strategies can make a significant difference in the outcomes for officers and community members alike. What emerged from our community conversation was a shared desire for greater understanding. Specifically, we would like to learn more about the de-escalation training that the police in Paulsboro officers, that the police, Paulsboro Police Department officers receive. We believe that transparency and open dialogue about training practices can build trust, reduce misunderstandings, and promote accountability. Therefore, we respectfully request that the city of Paulsboro provide an opportunity for community members to engage in a public session or forum where the department's de-escalation training program can be reviewed and explained. Understanding how officers are prepared to navigate tense or potentially violent encounters is vital for our entire community. Knowledge of de-escalation techniques are useful skills for all of us. This letter reflects a genuine good-faith effort from members of the community to open a constructive conversation. We're not here to condemn, but to understand and to participate in shaping a safer, more connected Paulsboro for all. Please accept this petition, signed by a number of interested community members. Thank you for your time, for your service, and your consideration of this request.
Who could I give this to? Give it to the clerk.
Good evening, council members and audience members alike. My name is Tyler Rogers, and some of you may recognize me as I work here in downtown Paulsboro. I'd like to start by speaking up about a confusing and concerning experience I had regarding parking enforcement at the City Hall parking garage. At about 12:15 PM yesterday, I returned to my vehicle to find a letter that read, "Thank you for visiting Paulsboro City Hall. Parking in this space requires a city-issued staff parking permit. Your license plate has been recorded, and repeated use may result in a citation." The highlighted portion warned that after-hours parking is limited to three hours, but I was parked well within the posted hours. Confused, I went to inside City Hall to discuss the matter with this note. When I entered, I was approached by a kind employee who surprisingly had also received the same letter despite working for the city himself. That alone suggested these letters were being placed indiscriminately and immediately raised red flags. Eventually, I came across the individual handing out the letters, who identified himself as Rob. I walked him down to my parking spot, which had no signage indicating it was reserved for staff only. He insisted all garage spots were for staff only, to which I pointed out several contradictions between the physical signage and the letter he was handing out. He even admitted that the letter was worded poorly and needed revision. To avoid ticketing, I asked where downtown employees should park, to which Rob explained about a third-party system being developed to allow downtown employees to register their license plate, but to my surprise, employers and businesses have yet to be notified about it. This implies that people may soon be ticketed for violating rules that haven't even been clearly communicated. Rob mentioned that tickets wouldn't be issued, but in a couple of months, they would start enforcing these changes. What's troubling is that Rob, who I've been told is a newly-elected member, spoke as though this policy is already in place, even though I was told later that the city council hasn't even voted on the third-party system and plans to discuss it tonight. Here's the problem. I know I can go online and look up where I can and cannot park, but we shouldn't have to dig through obscure documents just to avoid being ticketed. We are a town with a large elderly population. Many people either can't access or don't even know where to begin looking for that kind of information. If downtown workers, residents, and business owners are in the dark, how are tourists, which are the support of this town, supposed to figure that out themselves? They come here to enjoy our town, not get confused or fine. At the end of it all, the letter itself felt more threatening than informative. It warned that my license plate had been recorded and implied punishment for rules that aren't clearly marked or officially enforced. That's not how the government should communicate with the public. This entire interaction has shook my confidence and made me question whether our city officials are respecting the proper processes and whether they value the workers and businesses that make downtown Paulsboro thrive. Please reconsider how this rollout is being handled. It's not just confusing, it's alienating the very people who keep the community running. Downtown Paulsboro thrives because of the people who live, work, and visit here. Let's keep it that way. Thank you for your time.
Comments from citizens?
Hi, I'm Claudia Gordman, and I just wanted to add a couple of comments to what Diana Allen was requesting. This petition that she has submitted includes about 200 signatures, give or take. And it requests a public meeting with city officials in July or August at the latest. I know it's getting late to request it for July. And also, at the meeting, people are asking not only about de-escalation training and practices with the Paulsboro Police, but also the navigator and the limited number of hours that the navigator is working, during which perhaps the navigator can be of help, but what happens on weekends and at night times? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Carolyn Zimmers. I remembered to do that this time. I am asking the Paulsboro City Council to pass a city ordinance requiring visible identification for all law enforcement officers, including federal agents operating in our city. Identification should include a visible badge, identifiable uniform, and banning of any face masks that obscure facial features. Over the last six months, we've witnessed an alarming rise in disappearances, surveillance, and secretive operations targeting immigrants, international students, researchers, leaders of organizations, protesters, and even elected officials by federal law enforcement. Across the country, individuals have reportedly been abducted by masked unidentified officers, taken without notice, and detained without immediate access to lawyers or family. In many cases, those targeted have not been accused of a crime, only of participating in protests, speaking out about US foreign policy, or simply being present at immigrant-heavy protests in institutions like universities. In other cases, they are alleged to have obstructed or assaulted law enforcement, even when video evidence contradicts those claims. This is part of a deliberate and escalating federal strategy under the Trump administration to supercharge its anti-immigrant agenda by using fear, surveillance, and unchecked enforcement to target immigrant communities, dismantle protections, and send a message that no one, not even lawful residents or elected officials or visa holders, are safe. Washington State has not yet introduced legislation to prohibit law enforcement officers from hiding their identities behind masks and anonymous uniforms during public operations. Thus, I will repeat my ask to the city council because it is so imperative. Pass a city ordinance requiring visible identification for all law enforcement officers, federal, state, county, and city. This would entail a visible badge, identifiable uniform, and not wearing face masks. This isn't just a federal issue. It's a local emergency, and our city must act to protect its people. I hope you'll lead on this and protect our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Zimmers. Comments from citizens? Okay, I'm not seeing any more people getting up, so we're gonna go ahead and move on with our agenda. The next is mayor's reports and council comments. Mr. McVeigh, how are you this evening?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming down tonight. Quite a variety of citizen comments. I'm not going to address them specifically. I guess I would just note, if we were to host a meeting to discuss the city's police training in de-escalation, and they do take de-escalation training, it's required by state law, it would need to be a general conversation. There are two active investigations into the shooting that was referenced. So I think we just need to make sure that that would be clear. And I would also want to be reassured, if I was to participate, and I don't know if I actually would need to, I think they probably want to talk with our police department. The last group that came in to speak with us about this issue had got raucous. It got, it was not conducive to dialogue whatsoever. And so I personally would want some sort of understanding that if we want to enter into dialogue with one another, that we do have dialogue and not screaming and not name-calling from the back of the room. I also want to just note that we did have an individual who wanted to appear tonight, but he was not able to, and that is a community volunteer, community builder, Bill Austin. Bill gave me permission to say hello to him and to greet folks here tonight. And as most people know, and it's been on Facebook, Bill had a bit of a health scare recently, but he is back home. You should all know that he is doing well, and he is anxious to return to the council chambers to hold us all accountable for one thing or another. So greetings to you, Bill. Thank you.
Mr. Knoll, go ahead.
Despite it being warm out there, and kind of glad our air conditioning is working in here, I think everybody's been out enjoying the sun. I see some red faces, reddish faces around here. So stay safe when you're out there and protect yourself with sunscreen. We don't normally need that. I will point out, and we'll have a discussion in the works study, that we had a good discussion last Thursday with the city of Bainbridge Island, Kitsap County, regarding our responsibilities and our opportunities around step housing, working for those that are most at risk, and how do we provide solutions for them, or at least start moving in that direction? So I'm looking forward to the workshop at Dundee Dome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturtes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, a beautiful concert last night at the waterfront. Well-attended. Beautiful weather, good music. Saw a lot of folks out there, and just reinforces how blessed we are to live here. As far as the suggestion on de-escalation and navigator, I might suggest, Mayor, that if there's room on our agenda in August, that it may be conducted as part of a council study workshop presentation. I think the council could benefit with a refresh as much as anyone. It would allow for a proper formatting, and I think for increased sharing of knowledge. So a suggestion that that might be able to be incorporated relatively quickly as part of a study workshop group when we're down below. As far as Mr. Austin, I received also a phone call, Mr. McVeigh. And you know, Mayor, he's very excited about the new bill that passed in the legislature that allows speed limits to now fall by the order of the city and the council well below 25 miles an hour, as little as 10 miles an hour. And that's something that's exciting to me, as we, over the next couple of years, with our engineering and public works, look at the re-forming of Front Street as part of our utility upgrade projects, and of course, we'll be looking at capacity for general amenities. That there's that opportunity to incorporate that. It would take a lot of planning. We have time on our side. It would take budgeting. But that whole loop of Front Street, the short block of Hostmark, to Third, to Mo, to Jensen, are really an exciting opportunity to re-envision and refresh the way the downtown interacts with pedestrians. And then I want to add, in closing, extend an invitation to my colleagues here. Tomorrow at 11:00 AM is a quarterly meeting of the Olympic College Steering Group for the Phase II Healthcare Center. There's going to be a tour of the existing building and the many improvements that have been made with the $6 million that was provided by the county, $2 million from Virginia Mason, and another one and a half from Olympic, so it's actually almost $10 million.
It was $8 million from the county.
Was eight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters.
So anyway, that would be at 11:00 AM, and there'll be a tour of the facility, and then the steering committee, of which the mayor and I sit on, there's some 30 people, will be again engaged in how to get to a Phase II building. And there'll be also representation from the tribe there who have a keen interest. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Crowe?
Thank you all for sharing your comments. There definitely are various competing factors of concern that are happening on a national level and in our communities. I appreciate. Also, the awareness on some communication pieces and steps that we might need to look at and put in place regarding parking. So sorry about that confusion. So I definitely am open to a workshop in reference to de-escalation and looking at that and see how we might be able to support our community and law enforcement, and how challenges are engaged in. Also, in reference to the weather, just want to remind folks to check on one another and to remember that there are public places, like libraries, that folks can go and cool off. And if you have an extra fan, and you can give it to someone that might be in need, please do that. So thank you so much for being here and sharing your concerns, and you know, it's always good to hear, as well as those who have communicated via email as well regarding concerns in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Taber, aye.
Good evening, council. Good evening, community. Appreciate all the comments and communications, listening, and we'll look into each matter. And I look forward to diving into things, especially parking coming up here. And that's it for me for tonight.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes, good evening. Apologies to all for being late. It's always fun when a half a mile on the base takes 20 minutes, and there's no reason why. But anyway, so I did miss some of the comments, so just know I'll go back and watch the video and catch up on what I missed. I do think we already talked about with the new bill and potential for money for new police officers, having a discussion about kind of all of our financing for public safety. That bill does allow for funding for co-responder programs and some other things. So I think an expansion of the navigator, that that should be something we add to that discussion. Because peer support, co-responder, all those, all the other H3-type positions that we've been looking at forever are part of that. So expanding our navigator, either through an additional person or expanding hours, certainly seems to me to make sense to be part of that conversation. So I think we need to talk public safety as a whole. And again, look at all the funding sources at once, because we've got several now that are crossing. And yeah, parking, we're gonna talk about parking, so I'll just wait for that. Anyway, thanks. Thanks for bearing with my delay.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Couple comments. Chief, you're here. You want to step up here and talk a little bit about the de-escalation? This has come up many times, and I'm very proud of our police department and the level of training and expertise that they have. I know that we issued a large press release after the incident and talked about this. And so, Chief, just, I hate to do this to you, Ron, but could you just kind of talk a little bit about the de-escalation?
I don't mind at all. It's an important topic, and it's one that I think there is a lot of room for gaining understanding on both sides of the issue. We actually have prepared a comprehensive document that outlines the hundreds of hours that officers receive in their first year of training, and then their first three years of employment, and then ongoing beyond that. But because of the sensitivity of the investigations that we're currently involved in, we had that document reviewed by our attorney, and our attorney's recommendation was that we hold that as a reference document until these investigations are concluded, and then it can be distributed on a wide scale. It's frustrating for people involved in the situation who want to know more to be told from the police department and the government that we can't talk yet. And I understand that frustration because it frustrates us, frankly. We want to have dialogue about topics where we are the experts. We want to have dialogue about topics where we need to learn more. But right now, we have to follow the guidance of our attorneys so that the integrity of the investigations are intact. And the objectivity of the investigation is something we do not want to compromise. The state of Washington created a structure where the involved agency that uses deadly force does not involve themselves in the investigation. That creates an atmosphere of the best ability to be objective, and we don't want to interfere with that. So the Office of Independent Investigations is conducting every aspect of the investigation into the shooting that occurred, and we are staying out of it because we want them to do their job and to deliver a report that is absolutely influenced by us and objective. So while I acknowledge, the conversation needs to take place. I think great benefit would come from it if it is truly constructive dialogue. And we're eager to participate in it, but we are being told we can't yet.
Thank you. That's exactly what my understanding was, is that, you know, we try really hard. Go ahead, Mr. Sturtes.
Just a quick question for Ron. Just to frame folks' expectations. The investigations that the Office of Independent Investigation has completed so far, I think there's been two, maybe three, how long did those take? So the ones that they've already done?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're the third incident that they have investigated. The first one occurred in Vancouver, Washington, and they have released their report. You can find it online on the Office of Independent Investigations website. You can read that report. It's been released. The second investigation is a shooting that occurred in Centralia, Washington. It has not been concluded yet. Those investigations occurred, I believe, in January was Vancouver. February was Centralia. I think I have that correct. And then we're third. They have told us they hope that they may be able to deliver results to their investigation by the end of August. But I don't know if that's, that's true. I have no idea where they're at in their investigation. That's part of the process. We don't know where they are, and we can't ask. So, but we were told by them, maybe end of August. Then it goes to our county prosecutor. So it may be that they'll release their report, but we may not still have the ability to discuss it. It goes to the county prosecutor after that.
Okay. Mr. Sturtes, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. If you could clarify, Mayor, or Chief. If I hear you clearly, anything with respect to the investigation regarding the shooting right now is sequestered information on the advice of legal counsel. Is there any material that is of a high level, such that it's already publicly disseminated regarding our behavioral program, policies, and goals, our training and accreditation standards that are public information that could be shared in a limited workshop format, Chief, or not?
That's, that was the question that we'd ask our attorneys, because we wanted to deliver that information at a very, you know, kind of high-end, general level, and we were asked not to. But however, Criminal Justice Training Commission website also lists the criteria that is involved in the training of every new officer, and they do go into great detail. So you can find a lot of that information just by going on their website, or even making a phone call or a public records request to receive detailed, outlined information about what training officers receive. That may be helpful.
We, I don't think people understand that that local government, state government, county government, government is constantly subject to litigation. And that, in fact, the front page of the Seattle Times today, the headline is, "Spiking Lawsuit Payoffs Put State Self-Insurance Fund $1 Billion in the Red." $1 billion. We have, you know, we're insured, we have insurance, and we're insured by somebody called Washington City's Insurance Authority, right? Which is a consortium of cities that all gather together to have insurance. But we are very careful about the steps that we take because of litigation. We have to be. And we've been through some pretty tragic things here at the city of Paulsboro, where our attorneys have told us, "You will not discuss this. You will not engage because of litigation and the threat of litigation." So we want to be transparent. We want to be open about what we do. We care about, we care about the well-being of our citizens, and we care about their opinion of us being very blunt. We want people to respect our positions as elected leaders. But when our attorneys say that we have to operate in a certain ways, that's the way we have to operate. And so sometimes it's incredibly frustrating. It's incredibly frustrating. So with that, do you have a question, Pam? Yeah, go ahead.
So it might understand then that there might be a possibility that we can engage in a dialogue with the community, hopefully, late fall, you know, and I know that we can't predict that. And I do appreciate your clarification, because when we say litigation, it's almost like a CYA moment. And I do understand and respect the fact that it is And I do understand and respect the fact that it is um, you know, we have to, you know, respect the process and um, you know. Underst- I, I understand that I am a city employee as an, also know, serving the community as an elected official. So I understand that there are boundaries and parameters that we want the process to um. It occur in a way that's respectful to all parties involved. Uh, that um, if, if we can just, you know, keep it. You know, in view of still having the conversation as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Now, I mean, I'm gonna, don't go away. I wanna ask you another question here. Um. There's been a request from Dr. Zimmers about um, um somehow identifying. Police officers, uh, federal officers. Um, would you explain the relationship of local government to federal officers? The fact that they notify us and those pieces. Can you give, can you help me out here, please?
Absolutely. So in January, I contacted the local Homeland Security Office. Um, in Port Angeles, I'm sorry, Port Townsend, spoke with a supervisor there and asked. Point blank, what would happen here in Pauls Bow if you were conducting activities? Would my department be notified if you were going to be in Pauls Bow? I can only tell you that what they assured me. Was that any operation that they were involved in in the city of Pauls Bow, they would de-conflict it with local authorities. That has been my experience in the past. Uh, we had an operation in downtown Pauls Bow that was conducted by the Secret Service. They did let us know that they were going to be here and where they were going to be. Um, but they gave us only about a thirty minute lead. So by the time that information was disseminated, they were on site conducting their business, resolved it and left. Uh, there's no time requirement that I can impose on a federal agency for notification. It's standard operating procedure and standard practice that. Any agency operating outside of their common jurisdiction will notify that local agency of their activity. But the federal government is a larger entity than a municipal agency. I cannot require the federal government. Uh, to meet standards that I set for them. They have assured me that they will notify us if they're here in our city. I have to take them at their word. And I have not seen credible um, evidence of the contrary. I have seen photographs and if you uh are privy to the Facebook page that uh Chief Williams from the Squamish Tribe. Has contributed to. He has weighed in as well on what was presented to him as evidence of ICE agents. Involved in the activities mentioned in that letter. He absolutely refuted that and identified those unmarked vehicles as his own vehicles from the Squamish Tribe. I'm not saying that every black SUV you see is a Squamish Tribe SUV. I'm not saying that. But I'm also, on the other hand, not saying that every black SUV that is out there. Belongs to some federal agency conducting nefarious activity. I can only say they've assured me they will de-conflict with us.
When you say de-conflict, that means they notify before they show up because if we don't know they're here. Um, we could have police fighting with police, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so.
Mayor, um.
Mr. Taber's first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, and just a side note on the request for ordinance, um, Article Six, Clause Two of the Constitution prohibits. Uh, or just as a supremacy clause stating that federal law outranks state and city law. So there are, there's, I, I know that there's S B two, six, seventy. I don't know the specifics in California. But that's gonna have to go to court and there it makes sense because they go to court in the state level in California where a lot's happening versus our city going to court for. I don't think any activity happening here um, wouldn't make sense passing an ordinance and then having to go to court to try to. Fight a hypothetical battle that isn't, I mean, that, that I don't think, I, I hope it's not happening, right? You know, or needed.
Madam Mayor, we, we were able to, if I, if I could, we were able to uh, reach out to Council earlier today on that. After that comment came in and it does, just to confer uh, with what Councilmember Taber mentioned. It does exceed our municipal authorities as a city to actually pass that. It, we could possibly entertain some um, rules around or via policy for governing city. Property, but, but not the city in general. Um, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Okay, Mr. McVeigh.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I, I was gonna make the same point as Mr. Taber made, so uh, I would encourage us to move on.
All right, um. Okay, let's move on. I don't think I have any other comments other than the fact that I have less than twenty council meetings left. Okay, so um, the next thing is board and commission reports. Uh, any board and commission reports this evening? Um, I have one and that's Kitsap Transit uh, that I think you need to be aware of. Um, Kitsap Transit uh, passes a ferry study, um, a transportation study, just like we pass comprehensive plans, et cetera. And um, they passed, we passed that particular long-range study for the future of transit. But they are entertaining and studying the concept of inter-county ferries, okay? And they identified three routes, both Bremerton to Silverdale, uh, Bremerton to. Beam, I don't know. There were three routes that they identified. And then they said, would you like any other routes? What, if you had any other routes, which routes would you like? And I wish I had this other than on my phone, but Pauls Bow beat them all, smoked them all, double the request. For a fa- a ferry from here to Bremerton. And so um, uh. Great, um, that's a really interesting thing. Now, I don't know what that means in the future. Uh, probably does mean paid parking, um, else you have a ferry running in back and forth into downtown Pauls Bow. But um, it is, um, it was really interesting to me because of all the additional routes they listed. Pauls Bow to Bremerton was double any of the others in, in the requests from, from the people that took the survey. So um, I will circulate that information so you can take a look at it, but um, it was a very interesting meeting. So, Miss, did you have a question?
Yeah, or maybe just to comment on that. I, I saw similar stuff to that. Um. I think we need to weigh in heavy that we could, we cannot support that because we do not. We don't have any, we're, how would they get to the ferry landing here in Pauls Bow? Would we, are we saying that Anderson Parkway now becomes commuter parking?
I, well, that, I, trust me, I didn't suggest this.
I understand. I just, I'm just saying to my colleagues, because I saw some heads, hey, wouldn't that be fun? But execution.
So.
Not, I've just, from the standpoint of how do you execute something like that, they could make a, they could make a deal with the Port of Pauls Bow to use landing rights. But then that drops off a whole lot of people downtown. If we connect it with other transportation sources, it just, there's some fleas with that one.
Yeah, I, I would agree. As a person that did not support the fast ferries because they are so expensive. That I was not particularly thrilled with this information, but it's out there and I think that you guys need to know. Mr. Ecker.
Uh, yeah, I, I, was there, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the route you mentioned. You said them quick, um. Bainbridge to Port Orchard?
Uh, it was um, the, I don't remember the other routes, but the, but the route that scored so high. When they asked, would you like to go on any other routes, was uh, Pauls Bow to Bremerton.
Okay, cuz it, that's the one, uh, when I looked at some of the county properties, like where they hold their meetings, I was looking at that on a map one time. They actually hold their commissioner meetings occasionally. They used to hold them here and they stopped doing that with COVID. And now they actually hold them in a county facility that's on the very southern tip of Bainbridge Island. And it dawned on me that a ferry or a crow can make it from that building to the county courthouse really quickly. But in a car, that's well over an hour. And it just took us, took me back to our conversation about access to justice. And how long it takes on a bus to get down to Port Orchard. So I'm just wondering. The thing that I would see as a fair, supporting a ferry north to south is to go to Port Orchard for the courthouse, but.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was part of the conversation, but.
No, um, but.
Less of a touristy, businessy thing. I see it as a access to your county government thing, but.
It's, I, I, I wanted to say this is out there, so I didn't want you guys blindsided by this, okay? So that's why I bring it up. Go ahead.
Um, the RCO Parks um, and Port Commissioner Jay met and we had a productive conversation about um. Just the port and the land that it's on and the grants that it receives and then the requirements of those grants um. Basically have around the, the land use. Um, and it was good to, to have a meeting and get aligned with um. One of the commissioners and current temporary harbor master Jay. Um, and so we had a productive meeting around that, so good news there.
Thank you. Okay, any other um, board and commission reports? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we are moving on to the consent agenda, all matters listed within the, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. City admini- city administrator and department head comments. Rob, you started off, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, we can skip it if you'd like. Uh, just wanted to call out that item uh, in the workshop agenda ten B. Um, which is the, the step uh, report with Eco Northwest. Uh, just wanted to call out that we had talked about that being specifically at six thirty because we do have several guests that are coming to be part of that. So we just wanna be able to navigate that depending on how all of our other agenda items of pan out. And also just to let you know that we will be following up um, and provide council with some additional information related to. The, the ongoing, or, or the, the comments about our ability to actually reduce speed limits. Um, it's my understanding, and we can get you more information, that it is specifically tied to a, a, a classification of street. Um, that we may or may not actually have any of those, that street classification within the city limits. So. Uh, there's more to come. We need to do a little exploration, but we'll get that back to you as well. Call out that you have an opportunity, um, closing window of opportunity. If you're interested in attending the municipal budgeting and fiscal management workshop. In Winant- Winachi, uh, August sixth and seventh, the room block closes. You can still register, but the room block closes this Sunday. So we wanna make sure that you are aware of that. Um, also, there's a lot happening. Uh, it came up previously about uh, twenty fifteen. Uh, House Bill twenty fifteen, which enables city jurisdictions to councilmanically uh, implement a sales and use tax to support. Uh, law enforcement, uh, therapeutic courts, et cetera. Um. There is a workshop that's coming or a webinar that the Association of Washington Cities is hosting on the twenty ninth. Uh, this month, so I think both Deb and I are actually uh, signed up to do that. It happens to be the same day uh, that the Criminal Justice Training Commission is looking for municipalities to actually submit. A survey about are you eligible if you are going to uh, apply for a grant, et cetera. What, what's the magnitude? What's the use? They were charged through that same legislation with implementing and administering that grant program for that one hundred million dollars over the three years. So uh, we will be uh, trying to participate in that, but wanted to let you know. In advance, we, we still need to have a conversation with Council about that funding source and whether or not there is an interest in, in moving that forward. I'm also, was sorry that uh, Tyler slipped out, but very thankful for the conversation that I uh, had with him. I am the rob uh, that was putting slips of paper in the parking garage.
I thought you were really nice. You just put slips of paper there. I mean, I thought it was pretty good.
Well, it's, it's sometimes, uh, yes, I was actually keeping track of um. License plate numbers and really just trying to see are there frequent offenders? The, the, the impotence really was trying to start to educate folks. We are, will be moving forward with some of these, the signage and the markings. In uh, the parking garage downstairs because there is not enough designated staff parking. So as, as we move forward to try to make sure that we have the capacity internally to manage our own needs, that was part of it. Um, unfortunately, there's no good way to know if a car at seven thirty in the morning was there all night or not. And therein lies part of, uh, I think sort of that specific rub, but I have per that incident revised some of the language. And on the, the, the windshield notice and we will continue to do outreach, but actually it was a great segue for the conversation that we'll be having. Um, in just a few moments.
The parking has gotten really bad at City Hall because it's cool. If people wanna park their cars undercover. I came in this morning and drove three laps, could not find a place to park downstairs, period. Uh, went up and, and parked on the street and um. Um, there's people that are parking there all day that aren't city employees. So anyway. I thought the language was wonderful, Rob, so go ahead. Okay, who's next? Department heads.
I, I just have a couple of things. I wanna let you know that our emergency management coach is doing an excellent job. He found some earthquake training um, related to the building department and the inspection of buildings. After an earthquake or seismic event of any type, other emergencies. And we had two people attend this week. The training was excellent. We will have our um. A few members of the engineering department attend as well, so it was good preparation. The second thing that I wanted to mention is it's very hot for our area. It's been in the nineties and it's amazing how much water we use in the city of Pauls Bow. Um, peak day this week was over two million gallons, so in one day. So for those of you who are familiar with the Pugh Road tank, that elevated big ball of water up in the sky. That's a million gallon tank, so basically it was drained and filled twice. That's the equivalent. Um, we are asking citizens to conserve water um, and reduce irrigation. There will be a public notice that's issued and we'll put it on the, the Facebook page. Um, we did have the wires on one of our pumps get a little hot and we have a repair that needs to happen. These types of things happen when you have multiple pumps running for eighteen hours a day, so we have a lot of water getting used. Um, we have had some voluntary cooperation from some um, places that do a lot of irrigation. Uh, Ryan has made some phone calls and reduced the water usage by almost a hundred thousand gallons already. Um, but we wanna remind everybody, you don't need to water your lawn every day. Um, and please don't water it between the hours of six and eight AM when everybody is taking a shower. Because that's our, our peak usage time for everybody's information is in the morning. And um, we did take a look at our code and we have some updates we need to make, so it was a good wake-up call for us to realize. That there's some code updates on irrigation usage that, that we need to make, so you. Use less water as much as you can. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Diane, it's separate from uh, regulating usage, which is required. Is this, would you characterize it as a storage? Issue of water or a capacity draw issue that we're looking at in the city?
Um, it depends on what zone you're in. Um, we have plenty of water. We have an agreement with K P U D and um, on peak days, it's possible for us to draw extra water from them. Um, that water comes all the way from Seabec, from some very deep wells. Um, so there is not an immediate issue um, for capacity. But one of our biggest wells out of service for a re- for a repair during the hottest time of the year. Um, is an unusual circumstance and so. Um, normally I wouldn't say we have a, a supply issue, but right now I think we need to be a little extra careful while we make a repair. Thanks.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Heather.
Good evening, Councilmembers of the public and Mayor. I wanted to share with Council that Senator Bateman formed a housing committee. And put a call out for jurisdictions to speak about what they're doing for middle, missing middle housing. On how the new legislation has impacted those jurisdictions. And um, Nicole and I applied to speak on behalf of the city of Pauls Bow about what we're doing in response to that legis- legislation. Even though we're not required to um, comply with those regulations. Because I think it's a success story what our council has passed and what our community has been in support of. And we were chosen uh, to speak with Walla Walla, Olympia and Des Moines. And that will be next Thursday, July twenty fourth, uh, from two to four PM. I don't have a link yet. It's a virtual option and it will also be an in-person option and. We may be tending in person. We haven't decided yet based on a couple other conflicts and scheduling, but I just wanted to share with you all that. We'll be celebrating our successes, including Nordic cottages, as well as the legislation that we've passed over the last few years, so. Thank you and stay tuned.
That, that really surprises me because I've had. Some words sometimes with uh, Ms. Bateman, okay? So, okay, I guess we're all friends in, in this. Um. Anyone else? Any other department heads? Mike, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot. Um, the state auditor is almost complete with our financial statement audits. And we are trying to meet the deadline for the Government Finance Officers Association's submittal for our annual report. So we will be setting a exit conference um, towards the end of the month for the financial statements. They're still working on the accountability and we do not know if they'll be done with. towards the end of the month for the financial statements. They're still working on the accountability and we do not know if they'll be done with that that process and that may require a second exit conference. But this exit conference will allow us to move forward with that application. So look in your email within the next couple of days and there'll be an invite and information.
Thanks, Deb. Anybody else? Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Just wanted to give everybody out there TV land an update. Our mainline striping contractor will be striping our center lines and our fog lines starting last week of July, first week of August. So town will be getting a little bit brighter out there. They'll be coming in at night doing it, stuff like that. Our scrub seal project will be starting the first week of August. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on tonight, but that's up in the Callart Heights, Forest Rock, Palzable Gardens neighborhood. We'll be doing scrub seal, chip seal, chip seal up in that area. So just so all the residents know, we've handed out notices door to door. We've sent HOAs notices. We're going to be putting out reader boards. So more to follow.
Mike, anybody else? Any other department heads? Okay, seeing none. Now, oh, Josh, you have something? Okay, no, you're just moving places. Okay. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. All that matters listed within the consent agenda have distributed to each each member of the city council are considered to be routine. And it is item A and I entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, move to approve consent agenda item A.
Such, we have a motion in a second. Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Eckerdach.
Thank you, council. Now, the first business agenda is night work request, Front Street to Jensen. And this is Mr. Lendon. Would you like to introduce yourself? Go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name's Sherman Lendon. Started here four months ago for the engineering department. I've been very busy, learning a lot. Good.
Yeah, just quickly add to that. So Sherman joined our team as an engineering technician about four months ago and has already made a huge difference in our team. So we're very grateful to have him. And so feel free to haze him a little bit tonight if we need to, as he breaks in on his first presentation here.
Josh, that's not fun.
Oh, sorry.
Be nice to him, okay?
I will say I was a bartender for twenty years, so careful.
Here we go.
All right, council, I'm requesting night work for MLS Enterprises. Per PMC fifteen thirty-two zero one zero exemptions to working regular regulations must be approved by city council. That's why I'm here tonight. MLS plans to install fiber optic cable along the front street in the vicinity of Sunset to Jensen Way. The contractor is requesting two nights for this work. Here's a map detail. They'll be on the west side of Front Street starting from approximately two hundred feet north of Sunset, going all the way down towards King Olaf Parking Lot general area. There'll be no new poles installed, no outages to customers, and working hours will be seven PM to seven AM. They're planning for traffic control plan for their signs to be placed down towards Jensen, just past King Olaf Parking Lot, north all the way towards the Parks and Rec Building. Their pedestrian traffic, they'll be moving pedestrians over to the east side of Front Street. That'll be starting on the north end by the Parks and Recs Building, all the way down through the crosswalk by King Olaf as well. They can cross back over so they have a safe way of travel. You have any questions or comments or concerns?
Wait, Mr. Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome aboard, Sherman. I'm going to be nice to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Only this one time.
All right, appreciate it. I'll take it.
Actually, a question for Diane or Josh, a technical one. So I won't show on the spot, Sherman. The the capacity for stringing new fiber, remember Stown came through one night and many providers we could go through, the limit on the cabling on these pole attachments, is that a determination by Puget Sound Energy? Does the city have any review about the amount and the capacity of all these private providers doubling and tripling up?
No, great question. So currently, no, we do not have any authority to control the number of the wires. It's within franchise agreement. But it does go back to the owner of the pole, whether that's PSC that owns the pole. And not PSC doesn't own all the poles. Some of the actual communication companies own the poles and also lease that space out. But it is on them to determine the capacity of the pole and whether they can continue to add to it.
I'll just note for the record, being on the public works board, one of the projects we've held up and has been award winners, the city Anacortes rerouted all of these fiber extensions, be mandated through their water system rather than overhead. And it's been very successful and obviously more efficient and cheaper. So I just wanted to note for the record, that's an award-winning project and it was engineered by the city of Anacortes.
Oh, great.
Good to know. Go ahead.
Be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Should go ahead.
Move to approve the night work request with MLS installation of aerial fiber optic cable along Front Street.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye.
Mr. Noel.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Eckerdach.
Thank you, council. Go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item B, which is the fireworks advisory committee appointments. And this is Rhiannon.
Thank you. I'm going to share a short presentation because I received some council comments on the clarity of the agenda item. I just want to make sure we all know what we're asking you to approve tonight. It's just a moment. So under Palzable Municipal Code Chapter eight point two O, the city of Palzable currently allows the sale, possession and discharge of consumer fireworks within the city. The Palzable City Council has added Proposition One to the general election. Prop one is a non-biding advisory vote that allows residents to inform the Palzable City Council whether they believe the sale, possession and discharge of consumer fireworks should not be permitted in the city of Palzable. A yes vote means the voter is in favor of prohibiting the sale, possession and discharge of consumer fireworks. And a no vote means the voter is in favor of continuing to allow the cell position possession and discharge of consumer fireworks as described in the PMC. The result of this advisory vote will provide input to the Palzable City Council when determining what action, if any, the council should take to regulate the sale, possession and discharge of consumer fireworks within the city of Palzable. Mayor Erickson recommends council's approval of the following two appointments. Michael Fitzpatrick to prepare an argument advocating for voters' approval of the ballot measure. And Chris Black to prepare an argument advocating for the voters' rejection of the measure. I also had a phone call with Mr. Black yesterday, and he has also offered to serve on a citizen committee to volunteer bringing fireworks show back to the city. He said he had community support, a nonprofit, as well as a vendor to do the display. So I will pass his information on the council member Stern. If approved, the council office, clerk's office will transmit the names and contact information to of the individuals to the Kitsap County elections who will work with them on drafting the arguments. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, here's a revised proposed motion for tonight.
Okay, questions for Rhiannon. Mr. Noel.
First off, thank you, because this is confusing, double negatives. Am I voting on a fireworks show or am I voting on consumer fireworks? And so I think clarity is warranted. For those of you that did look at the reader, had Mr. Black said he was for a firework, ah, thank you, sir, for a fireworks show, but that's not what's on the ballot. Right, but I just, from that standpoint, we we just want to make as clear as possible to our community what we're voting on. And so thank you for the presentation. Thank you for volunteering to participate. The other part of this, and I think many of you may know, that changed six, seven years ago, required the elected bodies to approve the appointment of committee members to that actually work on these arguments. That didn't used to be the case. So that's why that's before us. We're not approving Mr. Black per se other than it's it's part of what he's going to say. It's really that he is going to be the one that the Kitsap County auditor looks to for that statement.
Correct.
The other piece of this, and this is just a suggestion for us as a city, as we get closer, it might be warranted for us to mail a flyer, hit Facebook others, to put information with regards to this advisory vote out into the public. For those, many of us received a, as an example, a flyer from Kitsap Regional Library today. It wasn't vote yes or no, it was just an information flyer on what that is. And so as we get closer, because it is, I mean, I sat there and I went, do I want a fireworks show here in in Palzable? Yeah, I think that might be great. Do I want fireworks going off for four hours in in my neighbor's driveway? Maybe not. And so I could, if we're if we're not clear. So anyways, thank you, Rhiannon, for putting this up.
Mr. Eckerdach, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for asking that because I did have, I did have a little concern reading the packet that Mr. Black wasn't, that wasn't what we were asking the committee to write a statement for. It's this isn't about if the city does a show or not, it's personal use of fireworks in communities. So that cleared that up. And I just want to, I'm going to assume, because personal information was redacted in in both of them. I'm just going to assume the clerk verified to both of these individuals are residents of the city. Okay.
Would you like to make a motion? It's right there.
Oh, okay. Yes. Move to appoint Michael Fitzpatrick to a committee to prepare an argument advocating for voters' approval of the measure. And Chris Black to a committee to prepare an argument advocating for the voters' rejection of the measure. And direct staff to transmit these appointments to the Kitsap County Elections Division.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further conversation about this? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye. Thank you to Mr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Black.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Eckerdach.
And thank you, Mr. Brown. Black, Mr. Miss Black. Thank, did I talk to you on the phone today? Yes, thank you very much. Give my best to your buddy, okay? Okay, moving on. We are the appointment of the Civil Service Commission appointment, and this is Rhiannon and Dan.
Thank you. We've had a vacancy on the Civil Service Commission since the beginning of this year, and we did receive an application from Scott Knudson for filling a term ending December thirty first, twenty thirty. Mayor Erickson is looking to appoint him and looking for council confirmation of the appointment.
Any questions for Rhiannon? Seeing and hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, motion to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Civil Service Commission as presented.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Any further conversation? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Eckerdach.
Thank you, council. Now we're on to ADU impact fee and general facility charge discount with a resolution number twenty twenty-five oh seven and ordinance number twenty twenty-five twelve. And this is Mr. Bateman. Hey, Michael, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Let me pull up the presentation here. Okay, I think we're up now. And good afternoon or good evening, council. Good to see you again. Here we are, the same discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago, talking about ADUs and how how we're going to proceed with general facilities charges and review fee charges for the building department. In in reminder that our recommendation is going to be to is currently to discount transportation and park impact fees by fifty percent of what a single family would have paid, single family home would have paid. Our stormwater general facilities charge discounted by fifty percent. And water and sewer GFC discounted to eighty-five percent of an ERU when a water connection is made. Of course, not all ADUs will require a water connection and many of them can and will be served from the primary unit. That would only apply to those that either need to or choose to connect to the water system. And making a plan and permit review fee adjustment for the multi-jurisdiction pre-approved ADU plan sets that the building permit plan review fee would be discounted by fifty percent. And engineering review fee reduced from three hours to one for those plan sets. And this is a layout of our current transportation park impact fees, water connection charges, sewer charges, storm, and how that would lay out for an internal ADU that does not need utility connections and external ADU that does not need utility connections, that would add in the stormwater charge because we're adding impervious surface to the lot. And an ADU with all of the utilities involved. And that's a pretty good summary of where we're at. And I'm going to leave that slide up there and and stop my presentation at that point and ask what what questions would you or discussion would you like to have on that?
Okay, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, Michael, if we get into this, and it's a year from now, and this is turning out to be popular and efficient and meeting our, beginning to meet our housing needs, and we wish to further incent, what is the process for further amending this adopted?
We would, we would come back to you just like we're doing now, come through workshop discussion, come through business agenda and make an ordinance change for the exact same.
So very flexible.
Yeah.
This is simply your decision that you can make when you choose.
If you if you decide you want to make a new policy change, we would be happy to accommodate as as always.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, Mr. Eckerdach.
With that, I mean, how much more flexibility would we have?
Well, you have quite a bit of flexibility. I mean, the the reality is we need to and and have the obligation to keep our utility solvent, right?
Right.
So we want to make sure that we're paying attention to that. And so if we say we didn't charge any general facilities charges for ADUs, then in the next round of our of our water comprehensive plan, we would have to account for that and raise raise utility rates accordingly. And the the costs of operating utility are kind of fixed. So the way that, you know, the way that those costs are recovered is through a combination of general facilities and fees and user rates. And if the GFCs are not high enough to cover, then you need to raise your rates, of course.
So potentially, we could we could lower these, but they could, the impact could be potentially a rate increase to all.
Yeah.
To compensate if we go too low.
Right, right. And and that's that's a policy decision on how you how you fund your utilities. And and that's a really a better discussion for during a utility comprehensive plan cycles to to go through and decide how you want to fund them. You know, this is this is more how how we're charging for the
Right.
stuff. But yeah, but those policy decisions can can be made. Those are those are city council decisions.
Okay, I just, I'll go back to the blanket statement I made last time. I think we should we should make this as affordable as possible to stay with our policy, not try to, we're not trying to make money off it. But we do have to recoup costs to keep this, keep the utilities solid.
Right. Any, Mr. McVeigh.
Mayor, I I support this. We had quite a robust discussion last week. I've reviewed the materials and I'm comfortable with the staff's recommendations. So I will go ahead and put a motion on the table. Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven of resolution of the city of Palzable, Washington, amending the fee schedule for engineer applications adopted pursuant to PMC three point two one two point zero two zero as set forth in Exhibit A. Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Is that resolution number correct? That's what's in the packet, twenty twenty-five.
It was supposed to have additional numbers after that.
So are these two separate motions or is this one big, two separate? Okay.
Two separate. So this is the correct motion number, resolution number, correct? Twenty twenty-five oh seven is correct? Okay. There is a motion in a second on the table for this resolution and for the conversation.
I I just want to thank the staff for this presentation because this could get confusing and you guys did a good job making this not confusing.
Thank you. You're right. It is very confusing. And like we mentioned last time, we agonized over this and changed our mind three times.
Motion in a second. Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Pro, aye.
Taber, aye.
Eckerdach.
Okay, and now there is a second one.
Thank you. Move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash one two. Thank you. Uh, move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one, two, and ordinance of the City of Paulsville, Washington, amending chapters three point eight four, three point eight six, one three point seven zero, and one five point zero four of the Paulsville Municipal Code to adjust fees and general facilities, facilities charges for ADU construction in accordance with adopted zoning code changes and city comprehensive plan, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions or conversation? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye. Noel, aye.
Sternak.
Pro, aye.
Taber.
Eckert.
Thank you, council. Good work.
Very much, council. Thank you.
This is really good work. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're moving on to downtown parking enforcement, uh, contract and budget amendment, and this is Heather.
Good evening, council members of the public. I wanna just take a moment, I may be before you tonight, but there's a couple people I wanna acknowledge that have spent many hours working through the contract, and I wanna also point you to your blue folders. Um, within your folders tonight, you have the scope of work that was included in your packet. Um, there were revisions that were made over the last few days in preparation of tonight's conversation that required coordination with Amy Knutson from court, Ron Harding from police, Debbie Brewer from finance, Josh Range from engineering, and Mike Lund to provide us the cost estimate for our signage. So I just wanted to assure you all, this has worked through the process, um, and we've had a lot of eyes on it. Um, so I do apologize, I, I would like to have these before you all sooner, but, um, I hope that this approach works for you, um, and I'll go over those changes with you in case you haven't had the opportunity to review them before tonight's meeting. I'll start with our vision statement, just to bring you and orient the rest of the community back to why we are where we are tonight. Um, this has been a two and a half year effort in the making, twenty plus years if you go back in time. Um, but this is to support our local businesses with the intent of increasing parking for our growing residential and customer base. We have a flat rate of parking at this current time. We're working diligently to increase our parking count by um, providing partnerships with local businesses to provide employee parking. Um, the enforcement element, which we'll be discussing more, more detail tonight, will result in space turnover, which will provide more capacity for more people to come and visit our wonderful city. Um, this is the vision that we've been working behind over the last few and a half years. And to further that vision, next slide, please. You passed a resolution in March, uh, that was to launch these changes, which are signage, employee parking, and enforcement in this order in twenty twenty five, and that's why I'm before you tonight, and implement paid parking in twenty twenty six. So to refresh where we were at our last meeting in June, um, when we discussed the enforcement services, we did release our RFP on April thirtieth, it did close on June fourth. Uh, we asked council, do you wanna proceed with this third party, understanding the cost of implementing uh, enforcement services and the order that we have been approved, and with a third party, and you gave us the consent to move forward with, uh, going forward with interviews. Uh, we did receive three submittals. Um, those submittals ranged in cost from seven hundred and twelve thousand to one point two million. This is over the three-year contract cycle. Uh, we interviewed our top two candidates, and there was unanimous support for Laz parking. Um, speaking to that, we have our representative that we've been working diligently with, Laura Lar- Larson. She is our special projects manager. And I've asked her to speak to some of the highlights as to why we selected her. Um, so I will, uh, turn it over to Laura.
Thank you, Heather. Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor. Uh, my name is Laura Larson. I work for Laz Parking. I've managed parking for thirty-eight years in the Puget Sound region. Uh, I tried to retire a few years ago and got pulled back into special projects and transitions. So if you hire Laz Parking, I'd be the one helping set up the parking program here. Um, the highlights of our contract, what we'd be doing for you, we'd provide a parking manager and customer service, uh, admin staff to answer calls and respond to emails from citizens asking about parking or, or questions about the permit program, or when you roll out paid parking, uh, about the paid parking program. And then we'll have a ambassador who will be in a mobile patrol, uh, LPR vehicle, that's license plate recognition. So he'll be driving around, uh, scanning license plates, which will allow us to capture data for you. Um, things that would be of interest would be like average length of stay per block, uh, how many employees are parking from each individual business at any given time, stats like that we'll be able to provide. Uh, we'll work with the city to provide the outreach and build relationships, uh, with the business owners, so they know they can reach out to us if they have questions or concerns. We'll administer the employee permit parking program. Um, I mentioned we'll utilize technology, uh, for the data. And that's gonna be a Genetek Mobile LPR Patrol, and we'll actually have a handheld unit we can use as all, as well. Um, we'll, we have options for light or robust enforcement, and it's all gonna be whichever you prefer, and we can move between the two. Maybe you want robust in the summer and light in the winter, whatever you need, we will work to meet those needs with you. Um, I think that's pretty much a summary.
Thank you, Laura. And, uh, the word that, uh, our city administrator and I were using to describe this earlier is adaptive management. And we really, um, emphasize that to you tonight, because the, at the last council meeting, there was a split in how much of enforcement you wanted, and we've had some very candid conversations with Laz about this program is going to evolve over time, and, um, we wouldn't wanna be responsive to the council and the community's needs of this program. And so that leads me to the next slide, which, uh, is about the budget amendment request that we have for you tonight. Um, Debbie and I worked closely on this. Um, we're only asking tonight for the remainder of the year services, and it's broken into two buckets. Um, the first of which is for the Laz contract, which is the one fifty-three, seven, one, eight. Um, and that will go into effect once the contract is signed. And then the second is for the improvement to the employee lots that we are still diligently working towards getting contracts on. Um, and that estimated cost provided by, uh, Mike Lund was about sixty thousand. Um, it doesn't include any land purchase, uh, because there's a possibility that we'll be purchasing some land um, from the church, and that remains to be seen, and there'll be some additional costs, and if there are, we will be coming back to you all for that.
Heather, I'm sorry, does that sixty thousand include, uh, new signage? Is that part of the cost of that? Thank you.
That's correct. And so our total budget amendment request is two thirteen, seven, one, eight, but I wanna give you a little bit of, uh, comfort with that, and that we're asking for the highest cost from you tonight. Um, acknowledging that we will be launching with the light enforcement this, until, um, we implement paid parking is the intention at this time, um, from staff that have been working on the project in coordination with police and court and engineering. Um, and I say that because, um, for the light costs, there's about a thirty thousand dollar savings that we will likely receive at the end of the year, but we're coming in asking for the higher cost from you, so we don't have to return. Um, so I'm gonna go to one more slide, and then I'll pause for questions, because I do have um, two more updates to give you all on employee parking and the code amendment, because I thought those were things, and I know at least one of you wants to hear about. Um, so for the cost of services, because this is a three-year contract, um, I'm giving you the estimated cost, it is included on the contract, but again, this will be handled through our mid-year uh, budget cycle, so we're not coming to you tonight for these full costs. But what we are asking, what this full contract could be, if it's fully robust, robust for all three years, it would be the one point one million. So I'm gonna pause there and see if there's any questions from our council.
Questions, council questions. Okay. No questions.
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, ahead.
Um, so let's just start with the contract. Um, just got back into town. Was hoping to get something, but spent the last two hours thinking about this, so sorry if I wander a little bit, because I've only had the contract for, it's two thirty. Um, walking through here, a couple things, section three, term or terms. It says the agreement will commence on the effective date. Um, the effective date is not defined in the con, in this contract. You verbalized it was when signed, but that's not what it says.
I did find that data had the same question when I went through it. Um, it becomes on section twelve, it shall become effective on the latest date is it is fully executed by all parties.
Okay, so from that standpoint, we start incurring costs with this project. When would enforcement start?
I can answer that. So it'll take about eight to ten weeks, once we purchase the vehicle and order the LPR system. Eight to ten weeks to receive it and to get it programmed, so that we can start using it.
So, so if I?
We can do some slight enforcement in the meantime by hand of small, specific areas.
So, um, that standpoint, and Heather, I'm, I'm not trying to pick a fight, I'm just trying to get clarity on what we're actually agreeing to and signing a contract with a commercial company for, and what we'd actually be able to bill them for. Eight to ten weeks, it seems like there's an implementation period that could be in the contract that says we have an implementation period that's gonna take us sixty or seventy-five days. And during that time, the cost during the implementation period is X. When we go into enforcement, when we incur more labor and we're driving around the cities, it would be X plus. Um, but when I look at the, and this isn't a contract document, this basically says there's this, there's a spreadsheet, but there's a startup cost, but the costs are level. They don't like start low and go up. Um, and, and so there really isn't that kind of clarity in this. There is, in the scope of work, that says the contractor will assist with us developing signage, but we don't, I have not seen signage come to us from the standpoint of what that would look like. I don't know how soon we are ready to buy and install signage, but that seems to be kinda step one, using your words earlier, it says signage, then employee parking, then enforcement. Seems like we're still up here before, seems like there's some precursor steps, yet we're potentially signing this contract tomorrow, Friday, next week, and gonna start incurring costs. It wasn't clear what those costs would be, and it seems like there's some steps here that we have to get in place before go forward. So let me pause there, and then I'm gonna keep, sorry, I've got a page full.
Why don't you get them all out, so that we know which, what your concerns are, Mr. Noel?
Sure. All right, so from that standpoint, if we're gonna implement pay, let's go with signage. Um, we have had some conversations about what would be the hours, uh, enforcement time, the current signs, say, three hours in Anderson Parkway. There's several areas in town that have no parking signs, most street being, I think we've talked about enforcement there, um, but I haven't seen with, this is the proposal that we're gonna do, three hours in Anderson Parkway going forward, most street's gonna be two hour, whatever the mix is. Josh had, uh, some ideas about two hours, but I haven't seen that. Walker study had different numbers. It's just, what is it that we're going to do? Back to your verbiage, signage first. Um, and then when we turn around, addressing the individual here that was here, and communication is never perfect. If we can get ten percent of the people to understand what's going on, I'd be happy. Um, but what is it that we think, how do, how do we roll out? Is enforcement ticketing, uh, immediately, or is it gonna be more like what we saw with our traffic cameras, where we start issuing warning citations for a period of time? Um, that's what we did just recently on the cameras. It's not written here, it doesn't give us clarity. How is that gonna work over the next three to four months as we start to bring it up and start to hopefully encourage, uh, change? Um, there's a paragraph in here about event parking and the p- the potential that we can bring on ad hoc services. I didn't see any rate schedule, then that kicked me into, I don't see a rate schedule that indicates, uh, back to the spreadsheet, why some months are twenty thousand versus twenty-four thousand versus, um, I don't know if we are planning to write into the contract specific dollar amounts per month, or is it based on number of hours? The parking contract as written says no more than forty hours a week. Robust parking would be more than forty hours a week. Um, if we were doing six, eight-hour days, which is kinda what I had heard at some point. So th- there's these kind of s- specifics that will drive cost to the contractor, and how we actually end up billing, you know, what is, what are those rates? How do we put that together? I don't wanna know the details per se. I'm just looking at the contract that's in front of me, and those things are not specified, and so I don't know what lot, Laz says they will invoices, but it doesn't say as how they're gonna invoice us. It doesn't describe the cost difference between light and robust. When I get into the spreadsheet again, when we hit the paid parking, and I know it's notionally April, for, uh, 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 light enforcement, the costs actually go down. For robust enforcement, when we implement paid parking, the costs go up.
Okay, so I have,
So.
I have a whole series of questions you just listed off, so let's see if we can get some of them answered. Um, what about the signage? That's the first one. How does that work?
I can speak directly to that, and this was a internal conversation Josh and I had. When we received the RFPs, it became clear to us that depending on the consultant we chose, that that would be informing this type of signage that we implemented. Um, we didn't realize that the, uh, contract, contractee would have input on signage, and so we decided to pause the efforts on changing the signs. And we're, I'm really thankful we did, because council agreed, and I don't have the exact date on, um, based on recommendation, um, that we move forward for, uh, clarity to the citizens of anyone, but any visitor that the two hour across the board was gonna be our approach. Um, and we were gonna move forward with those signage, because you're exactly correct. We have agreed to an order of how we will be implementing changes, signage being the first change. And, um, when we had our first meeting, once we chose Laz as the consultant, um, there was immediately some concern about two accro- hours across the board, um, is that there's not another option for people that wanna stay longer without moving their vehicle. So since then, we brought Walker, Walker, we still have about fifteen thousand remaining in the contract with them. So we've actually brought Walker and Laz together to look at how we stagger out the time limit, so that we have a successful program, where people that wanna stay longer can stay longer, absent of a paid parking option. Um, so I can say that we're diligently working on an estimated cost. We have identified areas where we want to install new signage, um, and that would happen before we implement enforcement, absolutely.
So just from the standpoint of things that, like I said, I don't wanna get into the weeds per se, but just at high level, would you anticipate bringing back a map of downtown with, here's the specific hours that we are, you're recommending? Three hours here, one hour there, fifteen minutes there?
If, if that's what council would like from us, we can absolutely deliver that.
Okay, the next one you said was, were you rolling out tickets? Um, that, you know, you're gonna have a grace period, or are you gonna start immediately enforcing? I, I wrote down your questions. Okay, so what about that?
I can take that. So absolutely, we would start with the grace period, where we would just issue courtesy notices for people that were violating, if they were in a three-hour zone, they parked four hours. And that will be something that we would work with the city to decide how long they want us to do that, whether that's a two-week, a four-week, and we'll do it whichever your preference is.
Okay, and the next question you have was about event park. How's that, how are you gonna handle event parking?
Event parking would be also decided on by council, it's not a decision that we're making this evening. Um, and actually, Lauren, I had a good conversation about that this afternoon as we were walking around, and I was sharing with her all the events we have with the Sons of Norway and Viking Fest Corporation, that there may be times that council wants to adopt by ordinance dates that are excluded from enforcement and from time periods, but those are decisions that you all won't be making today. Um, and it's just that there's the opportunity for them to be available if we want additional hours. Um, and then also for the council to decide if we want to exclude certain days for certain events.
Okay, and I didn't get the next one, it's something about rate shifting from twenty to twenty-four thousand. What was that one about, Mr. Noel? I'm not sure I understood that.
Uh, I was just trying to understand, because there is nothing in the contract that talks about rates or billing cycles. It's not, there, there's nothing in here. There is an Excel spreadsheet
Okay.
that looks like it was developed internally.
Did you explain billing schedules and rates, please?
So invoicing, that we would invoice each month, by the tenth of each month, we'd provide reports, as well as an invoice for services. And we'd only invoice for the actual services incurred. So if we, if you ask us to pro- patrol less, then the labor drops. If you ask us patrol more, it goes up.
So will, will we, that schedule of services, will that be incorporated in the contract at a later date?
I can direct you to payment of services, which is included of the scope of work, um, which is one point two one eight, which outlines that the work that will be invoiced monthly. Um, and so what Laura has, what Laz has provided here is the maximum cost associated with a light. Laura has, what Laz has provided here is the maximum cost associated with a light and a robust enforcement. Based on the staffing that would be needed to implement the changes during those time periods.
Okay, so then there's something about a question, but.
Before you go on there. So she can invoice, the way this is written, she can, the company can invoice this based on the services that they've detailed. At the rates that they are charging us, I just, my recommendation is we would have some sort of rate schedule that says. Hey, we want thirty hours of service this week and it's whatever, a thousand dollars an hour, a hundred dollars an hour. It just seems like right now it's set up that they're invoicing if there's no, if this truly is that flexible, there's no IDIQ kind of. Menu. Similar to the discussion Mike has about how many yards of asphalt he gets.
The staffing costs are based on the actual wage rates of the employees working.
It's not how it's done. I'm just, my question is, are we going to incorporate that into our contract so that when we get an invoice in? We know we got built correctly. That's, that was the question. It's, I don't care what the rates are or what they're for, it's just. What is the contract? When the invoice comes in, we know what we got built.
Can that be accomplished? Can you, can you give us the amount of, in your billing process?
Yes, I, I can figure something out.
I wonder if it would be helpful, Heather, can you maybe explain what the spreadsheet is we have here? And these monthly amounts is, are, is that actually what we're going to pay? For those months, or is that an estimate based on the actual number in, but the, the rate will actually be based on the number of hours committed?
It's an estimate and it's literally based on actual costs. It's not an all, everything's all broken out in separately. You know, it's not a X dollars per hour per patrol or and that covers everything. And part of that's because you've got a sixty-five thousand dollar LPR system. We've got to cover the cost of. Got a new vehicle and the patrol lights that go on that. So it's, it's broken down. In detail, in the background with everything spread out. So. If we don't have the car for the first two months, then we're not charging you for the car. And, and maybe we should look at, and we talked about this yesterday. Maybe we should look at having a lead up, two months of lead up before the actual patrol kicks in. Might be a better way to do it.
Yeah, it, it just seems like there's some sort of implementation time, but the costing was level.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, these, these seem like details that is the city administrator's job to figure out.
Mr. Eckert, that's exactly what I was going to say. Your way, Mr.
We are, we are, we are at a top dollar amount for the program, not an hourly rate that gets billed. As I'm often reminded, we just have policy, not hourly billing. Okay, so I would like to see the, the parking plan for downtown and what are the hours we're, we're actually going to assign to. Cause I think that that is policy. Is it three hours? Is it two hours? I would like to see that. I don't think that that's unreasonable to see that.
Okay, all right. Anyone, Mr. McVey?
Okay. Thank you. A, a few comments. I'm going to take us back up a little bit. The, the. I would say Laz's response to the RFP that we issued. For me, was one of the most comprehensive proposals I have seen in my six years on council. I very much appreciated. It was very clear that they'd spent quite a bit of time with us, thinking through what our needs are. I was particularly impressed with the fact that they are working with the Port of Everett on a much larger parking area. And they started with enforcement and then they gradually moved to paid parking in some areas as we are proposing to do. So I like that level of experience. I like the fact that they have an office in Seattle. I like the fact that one of their employees that's going to be working with this is based in Bremerton. And I like the, I have to confess that I was a little hesitant initially. About whether we should be using an outside contractor versus an in-house employee. But after reading the response to the RFP, thinking about the flexibility that using an outside contractor gives us. I'm feeling much better about the, the proposal in where we're at. I just want to remind my colleagues of a couple important points. The good, you know, the good news is the estimates that we're getting here so far from Laz. Are within the ranges we got from the Walker consulting firm in terms of what, what the enforcement, what, what enforcement would cost. And they also, of course, provided us with an estimate for revenue once we move into paid parking. And so as I see it, we are on track with where we want to be in terms of the first consultant's report. Okay? I would also just want to remind the public, everybody here is paid parking and they want to forget that. Sixty percent, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, sixty percent of our city-owned public spaces would still be free. We would be charging for forty percent of the city-owned spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure every, that has not changed. Okay? We have not changed the hours we're talking about enforcement beginning at ten AM and ending at six PM. I haven't seen anything in here about proposing to change the hourly rate that we set in our resolution at two dollars per hour. So. I agree with, with Doug on some of his issues. It'd be nice to see a little bit more detail, particularly on the signage and the, the hours of time. We, where, where we even park for two hours, three hours. I agree that I do not think that two hours across the board is appropriate. I think we should have at least three hours in at least one location to give people time to go out to a nice dinner, have a drink, whatever it is. And I would also remind everyone listening to our conversation. That because of this downtown parking program that we are hopefully putting the finishing touches on designing and implementing. We have now identified a hundred and fifty new parking spaces for employees that we did not have before this effort started. Along the perimeter of downtown, which is where the employees should be parking. So it frees up more convenient spaces for customers and more ADA spaces for disabled and seniors. So I'm feeling good about where you are. A few more details that'd be helpful, but I, I. Given how long it took us to get here, I don't think we want to have a real large argument about. Well, I think it should be an hour here or two hours here or three hours here. I think we should rely on our staff and the consultants to come in with recommendations. And then unless we have a damn good reason to oppose that recommendation, I would think that we could reach a consensus. Hopefully following those recommendations. Because this is why we've been spending tens of thousands of dollars on consulting firms to help us with this project. This is what these people do for a living all across the country. I don't do that. Mr. Stern doesn't do that. None of us does that. So I think it's, you know, everybody thinks they're an expert sometimes in this area. We need to recommend to, to rely as much as we can on the recommendations from the consultants we've retained. And so far, the estimates we've gotten are bearing out to be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McVey. Okay. Mr. Eckert and then Mr. Stern.
So with the flexibility between moving between light and robust, how much advance notice, how frequently, like how, kind of what's our. How often can we make that decision, move back and forth? How will that be handled? Is that a council medic? Is that going to be the city administrator, person we have administrate? Like kind of just if you can get a little bit of detail on that.
I can answer the question that we can be prepared to make adjustments within a couple of weeks of being informed. I mean, we don't want to have an employee that we just say, you're out of a job tomorrow. We just need a little bit of time to try and redeploy them somewhere else. But within a couple of weeks of being notified, we can make an adjustment. Or if you ask for more, oh my gosh, we didn't think of this, we need help. Two days from now, we can pull from our staff at Port of Everett.
That was going to be my follow-up. Yeah, I just assume you will pull from another area.
Yeah, we'll cross train somebody from there over here.
Yeah, the thing that I had alluded to Heather that I would wanted to hear is about, we had talked about raising our parking ticket. As part of, because we didn't institute paid parking right off the bat, but our parking tickets are rather low. So at what point are we going to discuss that as a way to bring in? Some of the revenue we're about to put out if we approve this contract prior to paid parking coming in. So I'd ask her to address that. So if you want to.
Absolutely. And I, I want to elaborate a little on the question you asked too about the type of enforcement and when we oscillate between light and enforced. Robust, excuse me. One of the advantages of having. The implementation of hourly first and then paid parking that I wasn't aware of. That we will gather from Laz is we will have more concrete information about where people are parking, how long they're staying. So some of that can be used to inform some of our decisions about what level of enforcement we, we may want to seek. But the intent is to start out light when we do not have any, the cost recovery that we will see at the point that we move into paid parking. So just wanted to answer that we will have more information to help inform our decisions. So with that, I'll answer the timing of the changes to our municipal code. With, working with Laz, there may be some changes in addition to what you've requested, council. Which is to increase the fines and so that we're not before you all at multiple occasions. We have, will be rolling a couple of changes for to you. One of those. Is, and it's already been drafted. Rhiannon gets all the credit. She's done the work. It's already gone to our legal team. So the site, the cost. Increase can go in effect rather quickly. It'll come before council at two touches. And the other piece that we're working on is the reparking. If people can repark and if so, where, acknowledging that they don't have a paid option available to them. So that portion of our code will be looked at. In addition, we will be delegating the authority. For enforcement services to a third party that will need to be codified as well. So I'm just saying there's a few more changes. We do hope to get that to you all very soon. And they do reflect the sixty dollar, the increase. But another thing we may ask you to consider that we are learning from Laz and other jurisdictions is a tiered payment approach. If you all are interested, or potentially it's thirty for your first offense, forty-five for your second and sixty for your third and on. And that, those are just some small details we may present here that we're just trying to flesh out before we implement enforcement.
Okay, yeah, sixty for the basic and then I, I still endorse. A much higher for specialty parking. I wanted to clarify, this contract does not include any hardware, anything that we would need to put in when we move to paid parking, correct? So if we need to put in stalls, kiosks, things like that, that's not part of this. That's going to come to us later.
The intent is to do digital pay parking, so you won't have pay machines out on this.
Okay, so we made designs like, okay. And that would, so, but there would be additional costs when we put those up. That's not included in this.
That'll be part of the sign package.
Oh, okay. So it's planned ahead. Okay, great. And then last, just because I just learned about these, the barracudas. That's going to be company property. I'm assuming that, or not barracuda, I'm sorry, barnacle. Barracudas are. IT thing. Brooks is in the corner of my eye. So I'm just wondering if, assuming that's company property and not city property, because I was wondering if we need a code amendment to address if somebody. You know, you get your code and you don't turn that in, like if we have anything we need to dress around that, where if those are.
That.
Go missing.
The barnacle, that's the immobilizing plate, which I think PD has decided.
Yeah, just to know if we need an additional code changes because of that.
Perfect question. We would, but it has been a preference by police that we do not use the barnacle system.
Okay.
Yes, and that is basically, for those who don't know, it's a tow and place option versus towing. And our chief's intent is to tow as a last resort and not to pursue tow in place because there's more complications with that system and cost.
Are we going to leave it in the contract and just not intend to use it?
It wasn't what you saw in your packet, but it has been deleted for the final contract.
Okay, yeah, no, she has to re-review, so.
Yeah, that was one of the strike throughs, minor strike through. Thank you for noting that.
Um, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, my question has to do with the ability of the contract to be flexible to amendments. Over the course of time. I'm all for the budget amendment tonight. We're all in agreement that. Parking enforcement was a high time coming here. It's been on our books a long time. We just didn't enforce. And. One of the comments that Heather made or, or was it perhaps Laura? As we get into this, we will be generating information that can inform further decisions. One of the points I made, and I'm not looking to relitigate this whatsoever tonight. We have lively discussions in February and March. About moving toward. Parking enforcement versus paid parking. But the question of paid parking, of the enforcement of parking and the. Ability to generate turnover with existing capacity. We don't know the answer to that yet. As it's been pointed out. Hundred and fifty new slots are being created for employee parking. So my question has to do, not with the amendment tonight, but the larger contract that's up on the screen. Should, we, we had the example where I asked Diane and Josh earlier on ADU impact fees. We're, we're taking an action tonight. We're locking it in. It's going to be in the code, but there's nothing to prevent us from coming back in the future. The council has the prerogative about updating and shifting policies over time. Should, so here's the question. Should we, as we get in the next year? See that the parking enforcement program is generating a high degree of result turnover? And that additional capacity has been created by that turnover? Should the council wish to revisit the question of paid parking? Once we, we execute on the larger contract, not the amendment, are we locked in? And the reason I ask, I saw. It wasn't clear on severability. It wasn't, it was termination of services is not the same as an amended scope of work. And so. I saw the phasing was referred to under Laz's support of phase one. But I didn't see any other reference to phasing that would allow us to do. Checks on scope of work as we move through time, based on generation of enforcement data. That gives us new information and data. I'm just looking to preserve flexibility in the future, theoretically as it might be. For this council or a future council to amend the contract without penalty.
I can speak to that, Councilmember Stern. I think that's a great question. And it's a question that we asked directly of Laz, that their response was. Really favorable to me and I thought to you all as well, which is we are the client. And that flexibility will be available to us. So what they've provided to us in the spreadsheets. Is the cost of, with the assumption that we are implementing paid parking next year. But there is the acknowledgement and it's written in the contract multiple times. This is one of the things that we worked out the last few days. Is the ability for this contract to be responsive to the council needs and directions. And so there is that flexibility. Now, in terms of any formal contract amendment, Josh, did you want to talk about that process and what comes to council?
No, I wouldn't add much to it. I mean, if, if we did do a contract amendment, it would come back through council and we would modify it and work with Laz to negotiate the contract amendment. But yeah. But the way it's written, as Heather suggested, is it provides us that flexibility to modify the services. That we're getting and it's written currently as a, as a maximum fee allowed currently.
So the language in the, is there a specific area, Heather or Laura or Mayor, that points to that flexibility and states it as such? I know we had it just for a brief amount of time this afternoon.
Absolutely. I will find that for you. I see another hand go up. So if we want to respond to that question, then I will give you that exact language.
Another hand went up. Who else has a question here?
Thank you.
Mr. Noel and then Mr. McVey.
Yeah, just from the standpoint of peers, we're being asked to give authority to the mayor to sign the contract. So I, I think it's within our scope, questioning is to ask what is in the contract for tonight. The other piece is, and I appreciate a rollout plan, but I think that if this gets approved tonight. It'd be warranted to have some sort of rollout plan go out so that people don't go, hey, they've. The council approved enforcement last night. When does that start? The questions are going to start going. Is it starting Friday? Is it starting the first of October? I think it warrants us to get ahead of the discussions like we saw in public comment. Thank you.
Mr. McVey.
Thank you, Mayor. In sort of a follow-up to Mr. Stern's question. I. I, I, I think we need to look at this. In my mind, I, I, I know some of you. Have the hope that we're going to see such a change in the turnover parking spaces. That we're not going to need paid parking because you didn't support it to begin with. So. Which makes me nervous about committing to a three-year contract at one point one million dollars. Um, in my mind, um, e- even, Mr. Sterny, even if we did improve the turnover of parking spaces. That s- some people may feel that we didn't need paid parking. We still need a source, source of funds to pay for the enforcement. Even if the turnover problem resolves itself, which I think is not going to happen. But, um, if some people think it does. Um, the fact of the matter is, we are still going to be paying three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, for enforcement and we have no way to pay for that. And so once you start pulling this downtown parking program apart. I- it's going to collapse like a house of cards and it is not going to be in the city's best interest. So I would, I would recommend to you that you think tonight about. Uh, and I, and I have to think that Laz's pricing that they are giving us here and what they're including. You, you generally give a better price if you enter into a three-year contract than you enter into a one-year contract. You know, that's just sort of business one-on-one. So, uh, I, I'm kind of hesitant to push. Um, we can see what kind of flexibility we can get. Um, maybe they're willing to put in more flexibility than I think they are. But, um, I think our mindset tonight should be if we are approving a three-year contract. That commits us to this amount of funding for enforcement. That, uh, we need to follow through with the paid parking enforcement, um, paid parking. Um, program that we have agreed to in those portions of downtown, uh, that are the most convenient spaces. Thank you.
Ms. Drucker.
Uh, yeah, if anybody does, if, if we don't have any more questions for them, I'd like to make a motion to move to discussion.
Move it to group, move, move, go ahead.
Uh, move to grant the mayor the authority to sign the contract and approve the budget amendment.
Is there a second? Motion in a second.
Okay. So, comment for discussion. I, I agree with what Gary just said. I, I think we need to move forward and regardless of whether we end up changing. Plans on paid enforcement is what we said we would start with. Enforcement is with what our downtown business owners in the community said they wanted and enforcement still has to be paid for. So that's a whole, that's a big can of worms. We open if we jump back off paid. That said, um. I s- I still support going with the outside company. I think it gives us a lot of flexibility that hiring a city employee does not give us. Particularly as we move back and forth between what we want. Um, I think if we are going to give a grace period on tickets. I think we should go out of the gate robust, not light. Because especially if we're not going to actually, if they're not going to actually cost folks, that's a good way to get. The message to the right people that need the message is to give them a ticket that doesn't count yet. And so I would want to see the enforcement on the street as much as possible, as quickly as possible, as often as possible. And have those folks getting rob notes, um, that don't count. And then they know, okay, if I do this again in two weeks or four weeks, it's going to hurt. And so, th- and then we can scale back. Cause as I said last time, I officially have been thirty years in doing administrative programs. I got my thirty-year pin two days ago from the federal government. And I have been running programs that entire time that are not popular. They are not programs people want to do. And when you run a program that people don't want to comply with, it's always harder to start light and go heavy. Than to go heavy and then go back off. So I would rather go robust, especially with a grace period and then. Get nicer as we go, as people start to comply. Um, but I fully endorse us going with this contract. It was a amazing response. I agree with Gary. This. I read this. I was fully impressed. I think this is the best thing we could do.
Mr. Tabor.
Um, yeah, I think it's, uh, when we're looking at flexibility, we should look at the flexibility of starting with paid parking sooner. No.
Second.
It, so I'm, I'm from the stance that it's not necessarily turnover. It's, it's a financial concern for the future and then what the population growth looks like in the city. Managing parking as it grows. So even if we were, we increased turnover, which wasn't really a problem, turnover wasn't the biggest problem. It's the finance behind it. So I'm, I'm a definitely for keeping on schedule and I'm okay with, uh, starting off strong. Uh, robust enforcement as, uh, with the warnings. And then lower reinforcement in the winter and then robust paid parking enforcement next year.
Any other comments? Any other comments? One comment from me.
I'll just remind Councilmember Tabor that anybody that voted yes on that vote has the ability to bring it back and. On, end the agenda and vote again, like to bring it forward sooner.
Mr. McVeigh, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I just, um, uh, well, Laura is here from. Well, Laura is here from Laz and, uh, and Heather and Josh as well. Um, I, I do just want to reinforce. Um, that, um, our downtown parking is quite cyclical, as we know. Very busy in the sun, the nice summer months, not so busy in the winter months. So anything you can do to work with us and help us and recommend the appropriate level of enforcement. By season, by month, I think will be very helpful and very well received by this council. Thank you.
Okay, are there any further comments? We have a motion in second. Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye.
Mr. Newell.
Newell, aye.
Mr. Stern.
Stern, aye on the, uh, enforcement budget amendment.
Pro, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes. So, uh, I appreciate all the work you guys did. Um, and, um, onward. I'm really glad. I was circling for parking all day today. Okay, trying to find a place to park in City Hall, so.
Mayor, in light of, um, administrator's comments earlier, do we want to just move straight to our agenda item that was supposed to be at six-thirty and then take our break after?
We have one more business agenda item, okay, that you were missed because you weren't here. So we have one more. So Mike, you won. Thank you very much. Mike, what you got going here, bud?
Uh, good evening, good evening, Mayor and Councils. Uh, first off, I want to apologize for, for jumping the gun on not going through workshop first, but, uh, it's kind of a time sensitive issue. We are starting our, uh, pavement preservation scrub seal project on August first. We had a pre-con with the contractor last week. There's not a council meeting in between to be able to do this. We have decided we would like to add, uh, section of call art to the, um. To the scope of the work from the cemetery to the end of the road. That road is in really bad shape, as you guys all probably know, it's fallen apart. So we would like to add a section of call art to the project. Uh, the contractor will do it at bid item prices, but it will bring. The change order up to about thirteen percent, which is above the mayor signing authority. So that's why I'm here tonight. It's just to let you guys know.
So this is like to me a no-brainer. So can I entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Move to approve change order number one to the twenty twenty-five pavement preservation scrub seal project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. McVeigh.
McVeigh, aye.
Newell, aye.
Stern, aye.
Pro, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Eckerd, aye.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
We're not going to have a break because we have visitors waiting. So we're going to move right down to our workshop and start up, okay?
And Madam Mayor, if, and Council, if we could, uh, take the, the step. Agenda item in advance of these special events, that would be helpful. Okay.
Are obliged to plan for and accommodate step housing under House Bill twenty twelve, twelve twenty? This is not an option. We are legally obliged to plan for and accommodate very low-income housing, whether that's transitional or permanent supportive housing. The city of Polsbo received twenty thousand dollars in grant funding from the Department of Commerce. Back in twenty twenty-four to engage with other governments in Kitsap County to plan for step housing. That specifically addresses the needs of individuals struggling with drug and alcohol use disorder. Uh, and I saw for a while there, we were going to be joined by Laura Hodgson of the Department of Commerce that really worked closely with me. To make sure the city of, uh, Polsbo was able to get that, uh, grant funds from the department to facilitate this intergovernmental work group. Laura, I know you had to leave, but if you're tuning in, we're very grateful for your support and very grateful for Department of Commerce funding. Um, the STEP group has been meeting throughout twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. With representatives from Polsbo, Bainbridge and the county, both electeds and staff. I'd like to recognize some folks, um, both here at council and visiting in Zoom land for being a part of the STEP housing group. Um, I have Charlie here, the director of Fishline, that's been a recent and very valuable addition to the STEP group. Councilmember Newell has been with us from beginning. Councilmember McVeigh has joined the STEP group from the beginning as well. We've been joined by, uh, Mayor Erickson, city administrator Gelder, and in terms of folks on the line, I want to call out and thank. Uh, Commissioner Katie Walters from Kitsap County, Carl Borg from Kitsap County. Uh, Donna Dolquist from Helpline on Bainbridge Island. Mayor Ashley Matthews from Bainbridge Island for joining us, um, in the STEP housing work group. That's been meeting for a couple of years. I see that, um. Uh, Laura from Commerce is, is indeed on the call and, and Laura, thank you very much for helping us with that STEP housing. Grant that's allowed us to facilitate these intergovernmental meetings that I think have been incredibly useful. Uh, the meetings have been productive. We've talked about different models of STEP housing. Um, we've talked about different needs and challenges we are seeing throughout North Kitsap. But I think one of the most impactful things that we have done as a STEP housing group is recognize the usefulness of an outside consultant. To help us with the needs assessment and with some guidance to prioritizing our efforts around STEP housing. Uh, in January twenty twenty-five, city council authorized the use of fifteen thousand dollars on our own local affordable housing tax funds. To go towards an outside study of STEP needs and STEP prioritization. We also used ten thousand dollars from that commerce grant to facilitate this outside study. After a very competitive process, Eco Northwest was awarded that grant. Uh, and I'd like to introduce Mackenzie Visser from Eco Northwest that's going to run us through a presentation. That's the result of that outside. Contract. Um, when Mackenzie is through, I'm going to open the floor to folks from the STEP group to maybe make some comments or observations about Eco Northwest. Study, and then I have some recommendations or suggestions about moving forward. So we don't do what Mayor Erickson dislikes the most, which is put a study on the shelf and let it get dusty. So with that, I'll turn things over to Mackenzie. Mackenzie, thank you so much for working with us. Uh, really interested in your presentation. Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for having us tonight. We, uh, sharing. Okay, well, I'll do a brief introduction. So tonight we'll be talking about the findings and recommendations from our study. We've been working with several of you over the last few months and particularly have worked really closely with Kim, whose leadership has been great on this issue. And so we're excited to share our findings here tonight. Yeah, next.
And I've neglected to introduce Jade, if you don't mind doing that.
Yes, um, my colleague Jade Aguilar is also joining us via Zoom and social, um, way in during discussion. So tonight, the agenda for the presentation that we're going to go through is, I'll give a little bit of background context. I know Jade, Jade, Kim. Went through some of that, but we'll go over it again. We will talk about the existing North Kitsap resources. The needs analysis of the number of individuals who are in need of STEP housing in the North Kitsap region. Uh, for the context of this study, the North Kitsap region is shown in this map to the right. It's the blue outline. So it encompasses Bainbridge Island, Polsbo, and then the southern border is just north of Silverdale. And so after we talk about kind of the gap in resources and needs, we will talk about our priority recommendations before moving into discussion and next steps. So some additional context for this project is that this project, one of the catalysts for it was that. The city of Polsbo and Bainbridge Island and Kitsap County recognized that. The majority of resources in the county for STEP housing are located farther south. Um, in particular, sixty-eight percent of the emergency housing units and ninety-three percent of the permanent supportive housing units are located in the incorporated cities of either Bremerton or Port Orchard. But when you look at the data, uh, where individuals are who might need these resources. In particular, the point in time count, nearly one in five unsheltered individuals in the county is located in either Polsbo. Oh, Bainbridge Island or Kingston. The other catalyst that Kim has already brought up is that. Under HB twelve twenty, jurisdictions are required to plan for a twenty forty-four STEP housing unit target. Um, in particular for emergency housing and permanent supportive housing units. And I won't bury the lead, but North Kitsap County currently has no emergency housing or permanent supportive housing units. And on the right here is the target for twenty forty-four for Bainbridge Island, Polsbo and unincorporated Kitsap County. That is the number for all of unincorporated Kitsap County, so. That is not all of the need in North Kitsap County, but some portion of those units should be planned for in this region because of the need that does exist. And for Bainbridge Island and Polsbo each, they will need to plan for roughly four units of emergency housing. And eight units of permanent supportive housing annually from basically now until twenty forty-four. And clarifying that these jurisdictions, your jurisdiction is not obligated to build this housing. But you are required to plan for it and accommodate and support it. And that can be by funding or making zoning changes or forming partnerships. Like all of the things that we're, we're talking about tonight in the context of the STEP group to really facilitate. That these units are provided for the members of your community. So a, a bit of detail about the existing STEP resources that are in the North Kitsap region. And so, as I mentioned, they're fairly limited, but for shelter, there are two severe weather shelters. One is in Kingston and one is. One is in Kingston and one is in Bainbridge Island, and they are open under certain conditions for a select number of nights each year, depending on like the weather and other factors. And then there are also three safe parking stalls for men, and they are run by Fishline, and they're in a confidential location that I'm sure Charlie knows, but I do not. So, but they are in North Kitsap. However, the safe parking stalls and the severe weather shelters do not meet under the Department of Commerce's definition of emergency housing. They would not fall within that definition because they do not provide consistent indoor overnight accommodations. Yeah.
Since you brought up the definition, I've raised this before, and I raised it at AWC at a conference breakout talking about this. I was really surprised last year when we started talking about this, how restrictive the definition of permanent supportive housing is, particularly in that none of our facilities in town, like Martha and Mary, count. Like, they don't fit the definition. And so I asked at that conference, with some folks talking about this, you know, what can we do about that? And their answer was, it's only a legislative fix. Would you agree with that, that that is the only way that we can move forward and try to move senior listed, senior assisted facilities like Martha and Mary into this definition? Is this require the legislature to do something to change it?
Yeah, so that's a great question and does touch on one of my points here, which is that there's also, you know, there's deeply affordable units that are affordable to households earning between 0 and 30% AMI, but they do not necessarily fully encompass permanent supportive housing because it does require those onsite services, which I'm assuming is the same.
Right.
Yeah, issue with that.
It just seems like particularly the large facility on the street meets the spirit. It just doesn't meet the letter because of a narrow definition. And so just, if that's true, if, I mean, if what I'm hearing continues the same answer, I'll just throw it out while Katie and Ashley are on there too, is that it sounds like this is a, needs to be a coordinated effort come next session to convince the legislature to update the definition and look at this as our elderly need to be included in this as well so that we can expand the definition and then maybe get more into this.
Is Laura from Commerce able to address this question? Is Laura added as a panelist, Rhiannon?
She's part of the group, yes. There she is.
There is no one in the state that is more expert than Laura Hodgson on the definition of STEP housing. Laura, would you, would you mind chiming in on councilmembers?
Um, I'm probably not going to be quite as, uh, address the concern as I would hope it would. But there have been a lot of questions about what encompasses permanent supportive housing. And while we and the growth management unit at Commerce and the local government division support local governments with land use regulations, we also have a housing division at the Department of Commerce. And in our housing division, we fund a variety of different types of affordable housing, including permanent supportive housing. And that group in our permanent supportive housing division, our permanent supportive housing unit in our housing division has been working very closely with a variety of different agencies to try to further understand and define what permanent supportive housing is and is not as we have these questions come up about what should be counted as permanent supportive housing. After many, many discussions, I think about over a year of discussions, and again, I'm not the expert on permanent supportive housing. Melvin Gazal is our key head lead on permanent supportive housing and permanent supportive housing legislation. The, I think, I believe the consensus is that after coordinating with DSHS, Department of Health, the healthcare authority in Commerce, that assisted living facilities and other types of facilities, and I don't know what Mary and Martha's is exactly, I did try to Google it, but I don't know exactly what it is, are not intended to be, don't fit the definition and are a different type of housing because they, uh, what is the term? Um, sorry, I wrote it down actually the other day. They, um, hmm, sorry, we were just talking about this. Because they don't necessarily have a lease, they're not necessarily housings, and they're not subject to the landlord tenant law, which is another characteristic of housing. And these facilities often are getting other public subsidies. So by way of qualifying them as permanent supportive housing, they would be eligible for double subsidies. It's mainly the first two items, so.
Thank you so much, Laura. Thank you. Commissioner Walters, did you want to hop in on that as well?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that Doug Washburn is also on the Zoom, and maybe we could elevate him as a presenter, as a source, a resource for us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll do it again.
Thank you for that answer. Yeah, I said, I think, I know it doesn't meet the letter, but I think they meet the spirit, and that's where, that's kind of where I'm at is I think it's a future effort to bring them into the fold because I, again, I think they meet the spirit of the effort behind the definition, but they, yeah, they don't meet the definition, which means they're left out of the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. And also, Laura, that was extremely helpful. Thank you. Just to wrap up this slide, I think another area where there's a little bit of gray area or incongruence with the definitions is around transitional housing. It's not necessarily emergency housing, but it's also not permanent supportive housing. And there is some transitional housing in North Kitsap. There is a recovery house in Kingston that I believe Polsbo has supported through Kitsap Homes of Compassion. And then there's also 10 units of transitional housing for domestic violence survivors through the YWCA, and that is located in Polsbo. So once we identified the resources, we looked at what the need is for individuals who might be in need of STEP housing in the North Kitsap region. And to do that, we triangulated a few different sources. There really isn't, you know, in any community, collecting solid data on the number of people who are unhoused can be challenging just because they're often outside of traditional data collection efforts. Like, if you don't have, you know, a stable address, it is really difficult to participate in things like the census. And so there can be limitations around the data. But we looked at a few different sources to try to accommodate that. We looked at point in time count data. We looked at Housing Solutions Center data, McKinney Vento school data, which supports unhoused students and their families. And then we also did over a dozen interviews with providers and law enforcement and city officials who really helped provide context to a lot of those numbers as well as helping corroborate or in some cases, give alternative numbers to some of the data based on their experiences. And so based on all of these sources, we came up with these ranges of numbers, kind of demonstrating the low end of some of the numbers that we came up with, with one methodology, and then also the high end of those numbers, and also giving a range to demonstrate that these numbers also aren't static. While many individuals are chronically unhoused, there are lots of households that can cycle in and out of homelessness based on the resources that they have access to at the time or based on the season or, you know, any number of reasons. And so that's why we've shown a range here.
Let me bring Charlie in for a moment. Charlie, when this study says that at any given time in North Kitsap, not including Silverdale, there are 200 to 310 unsheltered people, does that number surprise you or does that kind of gel with what you're seeing at Fishline?
I don't think it surprises me, no. I mean, ever, the needs going up across the board, including the unhoused. So no, that doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, actually, I'll just go back really quickly just to note a couple of these numbers, especially around specific barriers. And so one of the things I'd like to call out is every household essentially, per Housing Solutions Center data, every household that's unhoused would fall underneath the 30% of the area median income. And of those, roughly half have zero income. And so programs that might require some rent to be paid might be out of reach for some of those individuals, even if they are very low cost. And then I also wanted to highlight just that there are anywhere between, you know, 60 to 140 adults that have chronic health conditions, either physical or mental health conditions, and then also 70 to 100 of those adults that might be experiencing chronic substance use. Also just highlighting that these are not discrete categories. Many individuals will experience at least one of these barriers, if not more. They often can contribute to one another. And just, you know, someone who has chronic health conditions can also have zero income, can also be a domestic violence survivor, et cetera. And so these are not discrete categories.
Does the point in time count or any of your other data sources ask the question or count if, for veterans?
They do.
So I'm wondering how, how the VA could be, could help with this if we know, if we know how many of these numbers, particularly in Kitsap, are veterans.
Yeah, I believe that Housing Solutions Center collects that data. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I think it was maybe around 10%, but I don't want to claim something that I don't have access to. But I do think that is data that is collected.
This is like phone a friend. Doug, are you able to, to help councilmember with the question specifically about veterans as a percentage of our unhoused population by any chance?
I am a little bit, Kim. We're, we also, during the point in time count and the stand downs, which we have the veteran stand downs, we track that as far as how many veterans come in that are experiencing homelessness. Usually between Retsel and several other options, we're able to get them in right away. But I have the councilman's email address, and I can forward that to you, Kim, and he, and just to show you what our numbers are. But yeah, usually veterans, it's much easier for us than, than other populations.
Thanks so much, Doug.
Thank you.
One other thing, Kim, if I could just say, the Commerce, she was exactly right on her definitions too, on, on what, why permanent supportive housing and, you know, assisted facilities are different, you know? It, you have to have a lease for supportive housing. So everything she said was completely accurate. And there's a good reason for that too, because we want to make sure that we have enough of both facilities.
Yeah, and I also know that when we're housing older folks with, with chronic health conditions, there's a pretty broad income range for those facilities. It's probably a good opportunity just to remind everybody that STEP housing is for the very, very low income, 30% or, or less. An interesting question for me would be if it's an older, if it's a facility serving older adults that are 30% or below AMI, is that a spot where we might capture permanent supportive housing? But I, I will leave that for another time. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, so now that we've discussed kind of the gap that exists, we will talk about our priority recommendations. And so the following slides have more detail on each of these three. But we basically, we have three main recommendations that we think are a good place to start to begin to address this gap. The first, and I know Kim is going to talk a little bit more about this after, is establishing a North Kitsap interlocal agreement, or ILA, that would basically create a work group to coordinate planning, funding, and implementation of a STEP pilot project as well as STEP housing going forward, recognizing that regional partnerships are a great way, especially for smaller jurisdictions, more rural jurisdictions, to combine resources and really pool the types of funding and things that they have access to to be able to provide these types of housing, which can be very expensive. The second recommendation is that we think that work group should be tasked with identifying the first project, a pilot project that is either emergency housing, recovery housing, or permanent supportive housing after the ILA is established. And this would include doing research and due diligence around potential sites, operators, development partners, and potential funding sources for implementation. And then third, commit to jointly investing in a property that could support 15 to 25 units of one of those three types of housing. And the reason we have that scale of 15 to 25 units of housing is because that would address approximately 5 to 10% of the region's estimated unhoused population, which would be a measurable impact, but it would still be at a size that is practical to fund and site and staff, especially as a first project, both within the region, but also as part of this joint partnership. And so the implementation steps that would be required to set up this interlocal agreement, one would be establishing, so the initial working group members. And we think that at a minimum, this should be one senior staff member as well as a minimum of one elected official from each jurisdiction, including the Suquamish tribe. Once initial members are defined, we think the working group should sit down and really talk about the purpose and scope and timeline for the agreement, as well as starting a conversation around things like how will it be governed and how will decisions be made? Once there's agreement around that, a jurisdiction, likely whoever has the most capacity should take the lead on drafting an initial version of the ILA, and then they would distribute that or circulate that around the other jurisdictions for edits and approval. And then jurisdictions would need to formally adopt that ILA. And then finally, once it's adopted in motion, holding a kickoff meeting to start working on the next step in these recommendations. And so the reason we've selected three different types of model versus recommending one is because there's just, there's a lot of variables that can really impact what type of model is the most appropriate. They all can address unique parts of the housing continuum. They can support different populations, and they can meet different regional goals. However, any of these three would basically count towards the Commerce STEP housing target units. And so that is why we think that the STEP housing group should take the lead on doing some of that research to think about, you know, what resources do we have access to? What operating partners, development partners, sites? All of that, like what resources do we have access to? And also, what do we want to get out of this first project? And that's not to say that one, you know, when you choose a model, that there wouldn't be needs that are still in the community or needs that are not important, but recognizing that with finite resources and time to put towards a pilot project, choosing one that you think is really important to be able to start having that momentum and then building towards a system that has all of these different types of housing along the continuum, but picking a place to start. Then finally, and this could be in tandem with that research that is ongoing for the previous step, is investing in a flexible property of the region. The reason we have, like, stated a flexible property is because this would be a big step towards a pilot project, securing a site and doing any site preparation that you're able to would demonstrate a lot of progress towards the project, which would give you leverage for grant applications and securing partners. But if you secure a property that could be used for one of any of those three models, then you have not locked yourself into a certain type of housing project without having the rest of that research done. So you can make progress on this project without having all of the decisions made. This is, I think, the difference between the three models in a lot of cases is about the operation of that model, less about the building structure. And so it's absolutely possible to pick a property that could accommodate any of these three things.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to do now is invite any member or guest that comes to the STEP group meeting to provide their own reflections or comments about Mackenzie's presentation or suggestions for next step. So I'll just open the floor and ask if anyone here would like to comment on these, on these slides. Thank you, councilmember.
Sure. It's been a great discussion from this standpoint of first learning what is, what does STEP mean besides? And what then becomes our responsibilities as a community? And who are the people that can fill those responsibilities? And Charlie, I appreciate you here because you're part of our solution as we work together. And so Eco Northwest, we brought on board to kind of help define the problem that we're seeing and then identify some potential first steps for solutions. This doesn't answer the bell completely, but at least gets us focused on what's next. And I certainly appreciate that because this is knowledge that's not necessarily resident within any city council or staff. This is a specialized area. And so how we serve our community, this has been good. So I, I appreciate giving us that, all right, there is, there is a need. A way to approach it is through an interlocal agreement. And here's some initial first steps to try to get going because there are members of our community that need our help. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Matthews, you've been such an integral part of our effort since the very beginning. Any reactions that, that you care to share?
Oh, thank you so much, Kim. First of all, I just want to thank the city of Polsbo for your leadership on this issue and so many more. We've been meeting for two years on this, and I think part of the initial was just trying to determine what the need was. And we see there's a need, so that exists. And now I think the next step in the interlocal agreement is imperative. So I am glad to hear this presentation, but I think we really need to hear it at the Bainbridge Island City Council too. So I would look forward to having a study session and also getting this presentation. I'm just one of. Um, so I would look forward to having a study session and, um, also getting this presentation. I'm just one of seven for the rest of council members and really look forward to this happening. Um, we had a great meeting last week with, um, the Low Income Housing Institute, uh, who Bainbridge Island is contracted for, who's building some housing for us, but they're also, um, in the space of providing safe parking and urban rest stops and all kinds of things that weren't even in our vocabulary a few years ago. Um, and so I left that meeting so inspired. And it feels like we're getting ready to, we've been talking about it, so let's make it happen and let's do it. And I feel it, I feel it. So.
No dusty books on the shelf.
No dusty books.
So thanks. Thank you so much, Mayor. It's great to see you. Commissioner Walters, would you like to, uh, come into the conversation as well?
Well, sure. I, um, I just, I also want to thank Kim and, um, and the city of Polesville for taking the lead on this. And I really, I came in at the beginning and stepped away because I'm letting Commissioner Rolfe lead this, uh, for North Kitsap. So I was really here tonight, uh, in support and to and to see, hear and see the presentation. And and really, um, if Doug Washburn or I don't know if or Carl Borg have been participating more than I have, they have any comments, I welcome those. But I'm really here just to say thank you. I think we really get things done in our community by collaborating and that's how we get big things done. So, so thank you.
Any other members of the group online? Have any contributions they'd like to make? Charlie, any comments from your end?
Sure, thank you, Kim. So, you know, Fishline is new to the step group, but we're not new to helping our community. And so I appreciate being invited on to be a part of the solutions we're looking at. And we stand ready to support this in any way we can. We provide case management, we provide wraparound services. We're going to soon have a mobile market that could go to a community, you know, directly with food. And we're also committed to really upping our game when it comes to financial support for housing. And that's something we're deeply committed to. So I look forward to giving you updates as we move down that path. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Charlie. Uh, as promised, I wanted to give you some action items to continue this conversation so we don't just leave it as a study on the shelf. Some potential next steps to keep this conversation moving forward. Um, as Mackenzie mentioned in her presentation, selecting representatives from Polesville, Bainbridge and Kitsap County to serve as representatives to create a draft version of an ILA would be, uh, let me just.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was glad you mentioned Suquamish in there, too. But, um, I would suggest we can also approach Fort Campbell if this is an all North Kitsap evolution. We do have two tribes in the North End. We want to include them both. Um, and then I had a question. You you said the number from unincorporated Kitsap County. That's all of Kitsap County. Um, do you have or have you tried to break that down at all a little more by location?
We were not able to do that. Those are the numbers directly from the comprehensive plan, which is why we didn't do any extrapolations, but I think taking the share of unhoused individuals that are in North Kitsap versus overall, and then applying that number across the board to those housing units might be a good place to start.
Okay, because the one thing I thought, I certainly am not opposed to us being the first location. I just also recognizes, as the mayor often points out, we're the smallest and densest city in the county. And if the folks aren't actually located here, if it makes more sense to be in the county or in Bainbridge or, you know, if we knew that number a little more granularity on where folks are now, it might help inform the decision of where to cite the first facility better. Because folks are going to, they're there because that's in most cases where they want to be. They don't want to go somewhere they're not familiar with. If they're from Bermanton, they don't want to be in Polesville. So if they're from Kingston and we build it here, they may not want to come. So I'm just saying, if we can keep it as close to where they already are comfortable, it might get more use and better be more successful.
One of the few things that I know, council member, is the decision about where to cite is probably the most fraught, political and difficult when it comes to these conversations. So just respectfully, I think what we're doing tonight is suggesting let's get a body together to create an ILA that could then make a citing decision with the input of tribes and different jurisdictions. So I appreciate.
Yeah, no, I get that. I get that. I just, like I said, I'm just thinking if if it turns out where a lot of these folks say are in Kingston, that's part of the county. Building here might not make sense. So that's, that's, that's why I was asking if we had more granularity on that particular number.
Okay, right. Go ahead. Go ahead. Continue with the presentation.
Three things for council's consideration in terms of next steps. Selecting representatives from the participating step groups to carry an ILA idea forward. Come up with, uh, some ideas for all of our respective bodies to consider and keep moving forward with this ILA idea that's been brought to us by Eco Northwest. Another step for this council to consider is having a local group that specifically considers Polesville specific step housing initiatives. I really love what's happening with the step intergovernmental group. There's such strength and power in working together, but we also have Polesville specific needs and interests. So another possible way to go is to form something locally. Taking a recommendation from Mr. Gilder, perhaps not a council work group, but one that calls in community members that have expertise. Charlie from Fishline, folks from the faith community. Uh, when we started Nordic cottages, we pulled in community members to form an advisory group that was incredibly helpful to us. We might consider doing that again for step housing. And finally, this was part of, uh, Mackenzie's presentation. Council might want to come back at a workshop. Think about how our existing efforts to put land aside for affordable housing uh, at the single property, at the triangle property might be actually turned into more formalized land bank opportunity where residents of Polesville know that there's a way to donate land for permanent affordable housing in a formal way that can be memorialized and and recognized. So none of these things require action tonight, of course. I'm just looking for some guidance from council. Are these three things of interest to you so we can come back at a later workshop discussion and and move forward? Council member.
I'm very enthusiastic and I want to salute everyone that was associated with the step group, uh, both attending remotely and those here. Incredible work and you have 100% of my support. I I'd only suggest that the next step after step, having identified goals toward housing and shelter. And, uh, Mr. Thompson mentioned about even food stuffs with mobile food delivered. The one component that's missing in my mind, because this is really, as you explained so eloquently, so much of the existing step housing is Bremerton, Port Orchard, Central and South County. The one piece that's missing for this same population is access to law and justice. Those courts are in Port Orchard. It's a four hour bus trip to attend those mandatory hearings that require in presence purpose. For many decades, we had county district court up here. And we lost it during the financial recession. And that would be the next component in my mind. After housing, shelter and food stuffs is the equity and access to justice.
Even a little more blunt, I'm going on record here that the fact that our district court has been taken out of the north end of the county and moved to Port Orchard, and it takes four hours by bus to get to Kingston to Port Orchard to get a court hearing is something called access to justice issue. These people are denying, being denied access to justice. That's a legal concept. And I'm going on record, that's, this needs to be addressed. But let's go back to the conversation about housing people. Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just looking for council, uh, comments and and reactions about any of these as potential next steps.
Sorry, we definitely support, um, all three of the next steps in, um, reference to the local advisory group and considerations for area stakeholders. Uh, clearly our emergency personnel can be a part of that as well as, um, some community stakeholders that, um, are the hands and feet of the community. Well, you do it yourself, uh, that might be able to have a lens of, uh, the possible uh, centric needs. So this is wonderful. Um, I'm hoping five years or less down the road, there's something very strong in place. So.
Anybody?
Um, yeah, supportive. Uh, I think it's just, as I said earlier, it's great to be part of the community that cares. And we have some resources to maybe not solve the problem, but at least start figuring out what what we need to do. So supportive.
Great. I think we all, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I would be, uh, I can maybe see the need for a Polesville specific, um, advisory group, Kim, but I would just be really careful that the the interests don't conflict with the larger ILA group. I think we just have to be really careful of that and and the communication between the two groups would need to be good. Yeah, so that would be just one caution, but beyond that, I'm supportive of where we've been and where we're going.
Yeah, yeah, enthusiastically supportive of these, um, well researched, appreciate the the look at demographics and, um, trends and yeah, hopefully we can get things looking in the right direction.
I don't understand what formal, why we would have to put it in a land trust. I don't get that. What, can you explain to me why why that's important?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks for the question. Um, it's been many years since council decided to, I think the the word was to allocate ci- city lands for affordable housing through resolution. First time that happened, I believe, was back in 2020. The public doesn't know about that program. We've never defined the parameters of that program. Please don't be distracted by my poor choice of wording. What I'm trying to do here is say, could we have a a program that's defined and publicized so the Polesville community can understand what it is and and be a part of it if it's something of interest?
That makes more sense. The trust to me sounds legal, like, yeah, 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 yeah. So, okay. It in, yeah, yeah, exactly. And so, um, yeah, a way for people to donate pieces of property, a public program to, uh, assimilate properties for, uh, use to help house people. Okay, got it.
Thank you. Well, I feel like I've gotten guidance, um, thumbs up from from council. Look forward to helping with next steps. Thank you so much. Mackenzie and Jade, thank you so much for your work and members of STEP. Uh, it's just a pleasure to work with everybody.
And I apologize for the delay in our meeting, guys. I'm sorry. We were, we were doing some pretty complicated things before you guys got online. It happens that way. I apologize for the delay. Yeah, you want to take a break? Go ahead. Guys, you guys want to take five minutes? Break? Go ahead. It's 7:42. Be back at 7:50. Yeah.
Giving us some events updates?
Sorry.
Okay, guys, let's, let's get going so we can get home tonight. This is the special events for August. How are you?
Introduce yourself for the crowd.
Yes, I'm Pat Hightower from Pulse Bowl Parks and Recreation. Sorry, the Pulse Bowl just comes naturally. And I have your four special events for August. The first one is the regatta at Oyster Plant Park. They'll be, uh, uh, sorry, getting late. This is an annual event. It's going to be held on August third, and it is a rowing shell regatta. That was the word I was trying, words I was trying to get out with about sixty to seventy-five participants from about six or seven clubs. And so we have a couple of outstanding issues on this that we're still working on. But other than that, this is an annual event that we are looking forward to. Should be a lot of fun out on the bay. We have National Night Out. This will be our police department, the annual community building event in conjunction also with our concert, which is on August fifth. They will be having about quite a few vendors and they'll be doing a police and search and rescue canine demonstration along with some other demonstrations. And that will tie in again with our summer concert. One thing of note there that we want to make sure everybody that knows, this is being held in the Anderson Parkway, and it's going to be in the north end of it. They'll actually be blocking off the parking area at eight AM on that Tuesday morning, just so they can get everything set up. So that will affect parking in the area for that entire day. We have a white tie picnic coming up at Centennial Park. This is put on by vibe coworkers. This again is an annual event on August seventh this year from five to eight thirty PM. It's a community picnic that is in celebration of International Co-Working Day. They'll have food, music catered by Crabtree, and they're expecting about a hundred people to participate in this. And then we have the Pulse Bowl Arts Festival. This has been ongoing for many years, annual event. This is the annual arts and crafts show. It will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, August fifteenth through the seventeenth, also at Muriel Iverson Williams Waterfront Park. They're expecting about three thousand people over three days. And they have forty booths. This has been put on by the Cultural Arts Foundation for many, many years. We're still firming up a couple of things, a new site map, and then also trying to find out what the parking impact is going to be for them and what their needs are. Does anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, Gary.
Thanks, Mayor. Pat, if you could, you and Park and Rec staff could just make sure that for the Pulse Bowl Arts and Crafts Festival, that they do have the porta potty vendor lined up. There was a problem with the porta potty vendor for the organization's recent makers fair. And I'm not going to go into details on it, but suffice it to say, they ended up having to use the park bathrooms pretty much all weekend, is my understanding, with quite a few people there. So they need to, we need to make sure that they have some arrangement with the porta potty vendor for that event.
There was a misunderstanding with their vendor that has been straightened out since then, and we have been discussing that with them for this event.
Appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Pat? Sounds good, Pat. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so now we're on to item C, which is contract amendment with healthcare authority for the 2025 Recovery Cafe. And this is Kim again.
Hello again, council. You have before you tonight an agreement with the healthcare authority and a related budget amendment that will be helping to fund our Recovery Cafe operations. H three received a grant for a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-one, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars from the healthcare authority. Council is being asked tonight to approve a budget amendment that only uses twenty thousand dollars of that amount. We plan to use the remainder of that grant in 2026. We have adequate funding to run both the center and cafe services through 2025 with this twenty thousand dollar addition. I'd like to move the rest of it to 2026, and that will be included in my budget. Questions?
Yeah, just one quick question, and I probably have this wrong. Did I see something on meeting or two ago that we received some money that required some matching funds?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's not this one?
Correct, council member. There's a separate grant that we recently received from the Recovery Cafe Network. And one of the things that the Recovery Cafe Network wants its affiliates to do is raise some private funds through the community to show community support and buy-in of the cafe.
And that was the specific one. This doesn't qualify as matching. This would be, they want to seek community.
Exactly.
Do we have any idea? Well, we can talk.
Well, you know, I'd like to speak to that. We've had three thousand dollars in private contributions to the Recovery Cafe so far.
How much is needed?
Ten thousand.
Okay.
So perhaps at a future council, when we give you all an update on Recovery Cafe, I can flash up a QR code and show the public how donations are taken. The city of Pulse Bowl doesn't take the donations directly, but they go through a local nonprofit called the Salish Recovery Coalition. Certain members of the council have already contributed to this fund. We're very grateful for personal contributions and would very much let the community know what we're doing with the contributions that they receive. So, thank you.
Good. Go ahead, Mr. Stern.
Mayor, great work, Kim, and the whole groundbreaking aspect of Health and Human Services. I just want to give a shout out to unsung heroes that make your program possible, which is Debbie Boer and the Finance Department. When we hear about these grants coming through, small, medium, and big, they are there to administrate, account, audit, and make sure things go smoothly. And this is a patchwork quilt of fantastic grants, matching funds, and other resources.
That's right.
So, thank you, Debbie and Finance Department, for providing a safety net to Health and Human Services.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rick. Thank you, and I have very good staff to do that for me, so I appreciate that.
And I'm easy to work with, right, Debbie?
Yes, absolutely. I am on camera, correct?
It's a quilt still stitched together with the power of Tim.
Debbie has trained me over the years, and I'm starting to approach competency, thanks to Debbie's tutelage and her wonderful staff. So I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, I just want, this is a lease space, so presumably if we're building in it, the building owners are okay with that.
The building owners are okay with that, but you raise a very interesting point that we've had internal debates around quite frequently. We're making investments with this grant and a kitchen that goes with the cafe, and it's a very difficult decision to make investments in a rental property. So I do hope we can have a conversation with council sometime in the next few months about what the long-term plan is for what we're doing at the cafe and center.
I think, I think the long-term vision plan is necessary in a pretty short, short order, I really do. Because, you know, we're talking about opening the Nordic cottages. We've got the Recovery Cafe. We've got all the services. We're renting a huge piece of, a really big office space now. In order to manage all these programs, you know, we need to start thinking long-term about how we need to stabilize this. So, not that it's unstable now, but just recognize how all the pieces are fitting, getting fitting together, and what's the forward projection? It's, it's time for that conversation.
You bet.
Okay, any other questions for Kim? Good work, Kim.
Thank you so much. This will come back to the consent agenda next meeting. Mayor, would you like me to stay for the next agenda item?
I think so. I think it's the, it's the Kim Hendrickson Show tonight, right? Go ahead.
Lord help us, yes. So, as council is aware, we work with Gambit Recovery to operate the city-owned Nelson House and the city-owned Nelson Park. We operate that home, or Gambit Recovery operates that home as a recovery residence for men. It's been a very successful experiment. We learn as we go. Part of my job as, as H three is to work with Mr. Gelder and the mayor to find the right balance between giving people a second chance and encouraging recovery and making sure that we have enough safeguards in place that we're keeping our community safe and keeping our parks safe. It's a really interesting balance between how much we want to encourage change by giving people second chances and how firm we want to be about eligibility requirements for living in a city-owned house. When we first wrote the lease to work with Gambit to operate the Recovery House, we worked with our attorney and we worked with our risk management and decided that no one with a felony conviction should be living in that house. As we've been open and received feedback and met people coming through the center, we've revisited that decision. Mr. Gelder and I reached out to our city attorney and our risk manager to talk about the possibility of letting somebody with a felony conviction live in the house if they've taken care of their legal obligations, if the felony is nonviolent, and if somebody is engaging in active treatment through drug court and visiting the recovery center. So, again, I won't pretend to understand what the right balance is. It's a, it's a work in progress, but in working with Rob and our attorneys, we'd like to open the door to allow people with felony convictions into the city recovery home. If they're making a real effort to change, there's no violent felony in their past, and they're a member and good standing at the center.
Just as long as there's not, there's no violence. Mr. Stern and then?
So, Mayor, you're familiar with ARCC on critical facilities. There are protocol for public, not a public hearing, but public information. Would that cross the threshold?
This is not an essential public service.
Thank you.
Okay, no. Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I think it's probably a good move, and I trust you all to figure out the right way to do it. My only concern is convicted of a nonviolent felony doesn't mean that's not what they were originally accused, charged with.
That's right.
That could be what they pled to. So I would be concerned that what's on their record is not what they did.
That's right.
And so I would caution that maybe working with the prosecutor might also be part of that mix to know what that person truly engaged in, not necessarily where they ended the judicial system at.
I think.
Because we know that there's things that happen. So, again, that's, that's for you all to manage and figure out, but just that would be my only concern is.
I think the bill whether it was a violent crime, okay.
Well, sometimes things get pled down, and so I, that's my only fear is that the final charge may not be a true measure of what that individual did, so.
I think Rick Race is a good point. So any additional information we could include as part of that decision-making process, I think, would be good. I think the other qualification or non-starter you mentioned, Kim, is if a very registered sexual predator, they would not be considered as well.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
As an informal practice, Councilmember Eckert, when we are considering somebody for the house, there is consultation with our police department. So there is an informal process that happens where I try to get more information, but I like your suggestion of maybe making that part of the formal process as well. I hear you loud and clear.
Prosecutor's office might know a little more than even. So, as I say, more consulting, the better, more you know, the better. Because, yeah, you don't always, what's on a piece of paper may not always tell the true story. So we don't want to find out later there was more to the story.
The consensus is yes, more information, but sounds good. Let's explore.
I'm good with the change. I guess I do have one question, Kim. Can you tell us kind of what our numbers are running for the men's recovery house right now?
Yeah, what's been interesting is that residents have stayed longer than I expected. I thought it would be more of a transitional experience. So there's six at a time. We're typically at capacity. I think there has been one recent vacancy, so we're five in the house now. My hunch is that from the beginning of the year, we've probably helped ten men. Let me get confirmation and share it in an email. But folks aren't coming in there and transitioning out quickly, council member. They're making that their home, connecting to vocational activities, coming into the center and participating in support groups. We seem to be creating stable housing for individuals interested in recovery, and that's not what I expected, but I'm very pleased to see it.
Actually, I think that's wonderful. But we need more houses if we're going to do that.
Yeah, I guess, but they're making progress.
You know, what's wonderful about working with Gambit is that they're out of the house if they're not making progress. They have a zero tolerance policy for drug tests that come back unclean, for people that don't work, for people that don't pitch in as part of community service. So folks going the wrong way aren't staying at the house.
Are they staying longer because there is a lack of resources they're not able to find?
Great question. I don't know.
Okay.
My, my guess, that's exactly why is that they're staying because you can't get an apartment for five or six hundred bucks a month, you know? Go ahead.
That sounds like something that Pulse Bowl specific group in your last presentation would want to take up.
Okay, I think you got one more here.
That's it, Mayor. This will come back on the next consent agenda and.
It says Deb. Sorry. I said Nordic cottages. I thought it was you. Okay.
Good evening, council and mayor. We saved the best for last and the most expensive one for tonight.
That's good. I think it is that.
So this has been under discussion prior. We are intending to go to debt in, later in the year, and we've incorporated or planning to incorporate the Nordic cottages, the Knoll Road, as well as the Perk. And so what's happened is the Nordic cottages are very near completion. And so we've been, we've been funding the money. And what I'd like to bring forward next week is a, or under consent the next meeting, is a budget amendment. It would be under consent. And my proposal is not to do an inter-fund loan because we would be paying interest for government to government, but to transfer the funds over to our capital funds from the general fund, as we know that we came in with a beginning balance. And those funds would go into the facilities fund. And when we get the reimbursement from the, we've signed the reimbursement resolution through the debt issue process, the council would have the authority to move those funds back to the general fund or to use them later for some of our future capital projects going forward. So that, that's the proposal, is to transfer the funds from the general fund to the facilities fund. Debt proceeds, we plan to start issuing, getting forward to the debt process in September. October, it's about three months before we receive proceeds. So the actual debt issue most likely would fall in December with debt proceeds coming at that time. Depending on, we'll work with our advice, investment advisor for the best interest rates.
Go ahead.
So, just to say this, and I might, might get this wrong. Instead of doing an formal inter-fund loan where we document it, you're effectively, we're setting ourselves up for an IOU between the two funds.
Not necessarily.
We could absolve it. It's, it's not, an inter-fund loan means we have to pay it back. This has given us the flexibility.
That's a correct way to say. You, you have the flexibility to move those funds because they are councilmatic funds to move them back, correct?
Notionally in our head, it's an IOU back to the general fund, but we could rip that up in the future if some other.
Yeah, I get, I get concerned we say IOU because otherwise we'd have to pay the interest.
But, but yes. It's not a true inter-fund loan where we have strict terms and it has to come back.
Correct.
Okay, but our intent is it would at this point.
It could be.
All right.
You have, you have several capital projects coming up, so it's, yeah, so it can be distributed amongst any of your governmental funds.
That's a good segue into my question, Deb. And I know we've been talking for some time and about, at some point in the near future, that we would be packaging some projects together to go out for bond funding. And I'm wondering if you could give us a brief update, if it's appropriate, on kind of what we're thinking of packaging together and when we might be discussing that around the council table.
The immediate package and what is planned in the budget at this time is to do one debt issue for governmental obligation debt. And it will include the funding about, I believe there's about two point five million dollars for Knoll Road. There's two point five million dollars for the Nordic cottages. And I believe it was a little over eleven million for the perk project. And that it would be before the end of 2025. What we've looked at in '26 is a possible revenue debt issue for a sewer project and also looking at a debt issue for the public works yard, which we're still under the preliminary phases of doing. So those, I can't remember anymore off the top of my head what we have planned out, but those I believe are what.
That's probably enough for now. I just wanted to.
Yes.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
Remembering that most, the big one, like the perk, has a dedicated revenue stream from another source in order to retire that debt. Okay, so just make sure, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification.
Diane, speaking of sewer debt, we got an application off to the Public Works Assistance Account for sewer.
Darn microphone. Yeah, it's in the.
I guess, and but they're making progress.
Uh, you know, what's wonderful about working with Gambit is that they're out of the house if they're not making progress. They have a, a zero tolerance policy for drug tests that come back unclean, for people that don't work, for people that don't pitch in as part of community service. So folks going the wrong way aren't staying at the house.
Are they staying um, longer because there is a lack of resources? They're not able to find?
Great question. I don't know.
Okay.
My, my guess, that's exactly why is that they're staying because of that you can't get an apartment for five or 600 bucks a month, you know? Go ahead.
That sounds like something that pulls both specific group in your last presentation would want to take up.
Okay. Uh, I think you got one more here.
That's it, Mayor. This will come back on the next consent agenda and.
It says Deb.
Sorry. I said Nordic cottages. I thought it was you. Okay.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. We saved the best for last and the most expensive one for tonight.
That's good. I think it is that.
So this has been under discussion prior. We are intending to go to debt in, um, later in the year and we've incorporated or planning to incorporate the Nordic cottages, the Knoll Road, as well as the Perk. And so what's happened is the Nordic cottages are very near completion. And so we've been, um, we've been funding the money and what I'd like to bring forward next week is they are under consent. The next meeting is a budget amendment and it would be under consent. And my proposal is not to do an inter fund loan because we would be paying interest for government to government. Um, but to transfer the funds over to our capital funds from the general fund, as we know that we came in with a beginning balance. And those funds would go into the facilities fund. And when we get the reimbursement from the, we've signed the reimbursement resolution through the debt issue process, the council would have the authority to move those funds back to the general fund or to use them later for some of our future capital projects going forward. So that, that's the proposal is to transfer the funds from the general fund to the facilities fund. Debt proceeds, we plan to start issuing, um, getting forward to the debt process in September. October, it's about three months before we receive proceeds. So the actual debt issue most likely would fall in December with debt proceeds coming at that time. Depending on, we'll work with our advice and investment advisor for the best interest rates.
Go ahead.
So just to say this, and I might, might get this wrong. Instead of doing an informal inter fund loan where we document it, you're effectively, we're setting ourselves up for an IOU between the two funds.
Um, not necessarily.
But we could absolve it. It's, it's not, an inter fund loan means we have to pay it back. This has given us the flexibility.
That, that's a correct way to say you, you have the flexibility to move those funds because they are councilmatic funds to move them back. Correct.
Notionally in our head, it's an IOU back to the general fund, but we could rip that up in the future of some other.
Yeah, I get, I get concerned we say IOU because otherwise we'd have to pay the interest.
Well.
But, but yes.
It's not a true inter fund loan where we have strict terms and we, it has to come back.
Correct.
Okay. But our intent is it would at this point.
It could be. Mm-hmm. All right. You have, you have several capital projects coming up. So it's, it's, yeah. So it can be distributed amongst any of your governmental funds.
That's a good segue into my question, Deb. And I know we've been talking for some time and about, um, at some point in the near future that we would be packaging some projects together to go out for bond funding. And I'm wondering if you could give us a brief update, if it's appropriate, on kind of what we're thinking of packaging together and when we might be discussing that around the council table.
The immediate package and, and what is planned in the budget at this time is to do one debt issue for governmental obligation debt. And it will include the funding about, I believe there's about $2.5 million for Knoll Road. There's $2.5 million for the Nordic cottages. And I believe it was a little over 11 million for the perk project. And that it would be before the end of 2025. What we've looked at in '26 is a possible revenue debt issue for a sewer project. And also looking at a debt issue for the public works yard, which we're still under the preliminary phases of doing. So those, I can't remember anymore off the top of my head what we have planned out, but those I believe are what.
Probably enough for now. I just wanted to.
Yes.
Thank you, Deb.
You're welcome.
Remembering that most, those, the big one, like the perk has a dedicated revenue stream from another source in order to retire that debt. Okay. So just make sure we're, yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification.
Diane, uh, speaking of sewer debt, uh, we got an application off to the public works assistance count for sewer.
Darn microphone. Yeah, it's in the process of being finalized. The due date is August 8th and we've been coordinating with public works board for the submitted.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, this might be shifting gears and you can just say pass if you want. Um, are we still planning to go out for section eight vouchers for the Nordic cottage cottages?
We, um, the housing authority is administering that program and they have already went out and received those. And I am right now working with the state auditor on how to apply those because as the coupons come to the city, although we're not the direct recipient of those, we will be the sub recipient. So I'm, I just, as a matter of fact, I have the, the grants auditor on email right now. I'm trying to go back and forth, but yes, those are in place.
Yeah, we, we have the vouchers. So we couldn't have done it without the vouchers. So the vouchers will retire the debt. So. So. Okay.
Thanks, Deb.
Thanks, Deb. All right. So questions and concerns, uh, of the council future agenda item? Any questions and concerns? Mr. Eckert?
Uh, yeah, um, back in June, when we had folks talking about flags and banners, I, I threw out the idea of having a American flag themed banner in October into November. Um, if we could add that as an actual agenda item to discuss, I was hoping to, I, I asked for costs and we'll, I wanted to have that when we bring it up, but we need to put it on the agenda to move forward. So at some point with enough time to get them made and all that. So.
I know that we received costs from, from the last time we, we did some and.
We allocated money to it, but I don't know what we ended up actually spending. So that was the only.
I, I thought I saw that across my emails, so we'll make sure we can.
Yeah. So just.
I guess.
May, August probably is more than enough time to get them made, but just sometime there I get it on the.
November, right? Or October?
I wanted to, uh, my proposal, which I haven't formally put out yet, but was, um, from mid-October to the Veterans Day Parade. So.
Okay.
Probably need three to four weeks to get them made. So I'd like to discuss it before then.
Did you have one? Go ahead.
Yeah, Rob. I saw your email and maybe I got it wrong, but it looks like we have a joint uh, city council meeting with Bainbridge Island next Friday.
It's that ad hoc thing. It's.
Oh, it's the.
It's not a joint meeting of complete.
My confusion, that's, I saw that. I was like, it wasn't on my agenda. This is the, the normal ad hoc. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to note our colleague, uh, Councilman Rick Eckert achieved and earned his advanced certificate of municipal leadership from the state association, which is very much the equivalent of an AA degree in municipal process and administration.
Way to go, Rick. Very good. Okay. Uh, any other questions and concerns of the council? Okay. Continued, uh, public comments. Kathy? Mayor and council members comments. Any? Then I had an interesting motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
It's all in favor. We're done.